Welcome to the Calixco City Council, Calixco Redevelopment Successor Agency, Calixco Financing Authority. Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Tylinda.
Here.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón.
Here.
We have the motion.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Franks.
Good evening. Father in heaven, first of all, we are so blessed, God, to be able to approach your throne of grace in our time of need. And Lord, the greatest need is the salvation of our soul, Lord God, that you offer by grace through faith in Christ Jesus, our Savior. But Lord, there are so many other needs in this city, Lord. And God, your word declares that in your word, God, we will find everything that is needed for life. Lord, may we be a people that search the scriptures to find those truths that would help us not only personally, our families, but our city. Lord, another need we have tonight is wisdom and guidance for our council members, God, that you would guide them. And Lord, that they would reason together for the good of this city, Lord, for the betterment of this community. And God, we ask these things in faith and in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council went into closed session on the items described on the agenda. We did receive direction, but all reportable actions were taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Approve of the agenda.
Mayor, we do have staff recommending that the city council table item number 11. That's approval of bid documents for Adrian C. Cordova Memorial Park speed pumps and to bring that item back on a future date.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
And that would be with the tabling of item number 11.
Yes, tabling item number 11. Motion to approve the agenda, tabling item number 11 for a future date. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Legaspi, seconded by Councilmember Calderón. Roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylinda.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Presentations. Item number four, presentation, La Jolla Palms subdivision street improvements. Ms. Palomir, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember. My name is Lily Palomir, and I'm the Public Works Manager Administrative. During last city council meeting, I presented two items, which was our sidewalk improvement project that was going to be using grant funding as well as measure D funds. Councilmembers decided to table the item because they needed more information regarding La Jolla Palms. So back in November 16th, 2016, city council reviewed an item regarding La Jolla Palms. Back then, city management informed those present that there was two issues in La Jolla Palms. One is the construction of La Jolla Palms road or boulevard, as well as there was a list of approximately 91 items that needed to be done to repair sidewalks, curb, gutter, street. So there was a lengthy discussion back and forth during that meeting where the certain council members as well as residents asked to use measure D funds to do those repairs. But former city manager Armando Villa, as well as city staff during that time, informed the council that the city didn't have enough measure D funds to do the construction of La Jolla Road. So a motion was made to continue with what would be the first phase of repairing almost all those 91 items. So back in 2017, the city did a street overlay project that included 13 streets within La Jolla Palms. That project by itself cost 3.9 million, but 1.7 of the cost estimate was for the improvements that are in La Jolla Palms. The city at that time used $1 million that the city had from a settlement insurance. And then they also used $783,000 from LTA measure D bonds to do the repairs. So I brought with you, for you tonight, just all the documentation that shows, you know, what was presented back on November 16th, 2016, and how those funds that the settlement insurance was used as well as measure D funds. So if you have any questions.
No questions? Okay, thank you. All right, we will, at this time, move to public comments. Public comments are not to exceed three minutes. This is a time for the public to address the city council on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your place of residence. Not place of business, but please ensure it's your place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to 15 minutes. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the agenda, on the printed agenda, I'm sorry. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Raúl Ureña.
Muy buenas tardes, queridos calixianos.
Please state your name and place of residence, please.
My name is Raúl Ureña, and I live at East River and Calixco. Much gusto. Gracias, señora Alcaldeza Noricumbo. Muy buenas tardes, querido pueblo. Hablar en español porque sigue siendo la lengua predominante de aquí de Calixco. Calixco, ciudad fronteriza, ciudad próximamente mega impactada por unos aranceles que, pues, toman efecto desde ayer, ¿no? 25%. 25% a todo lo que venden en el Cárdenas, 25%. Muchas de las cosas que venden en la Walmart. Todos los que votaron por el presidente actual, Trump, van a comerse eso en su diario. 25% en casi todo lo que vendemos. Yo sé que aquí mi amigo Greenwich, no me imagino que son ropas americanas que vendemos, ¿verdad? México, China, no vienen de Italia tampoco, me imagino. Bueno, me preocupa una consideración, una materia de agenda que veo aquí en el número nueve, sin hablar del tema, pero en el procedimiento que aprobamos la agenda, me preocupa que no dice first reading. A lo que yo tengo entendido, el código municipal establece que para que tome un efecto, una nueva ley, una ordenanza, tiene que haber, así como la iglesia, una primera lectura y una segunda lectura. ¿Para qué? Para que captemos, ¿verdad? Para que la ciudadanía tenga chance de expresar, oportunidad de dialogar y llevar a cabo las mejores soluciones para nuestro pueblo. So cuando sea, llega ese item, nomás le pido clarificación aquí al querido abogado que haga esa clarificación, si es un first reading, y qué es el procedimiento para el second reading. De ahí en adelante, querido Calixco, les quiero desear un hermoso inicio de cuáresma. Me da mucha pena que vamos algunos a la iglesia, a rezar, a tener misericordia.
Can you please address the council when speaking?
Sí, con mucho gusto. Quiero, gracias, señora Marquez, disculpe. Me da mucha pena, y sí es más apto como que para este lado este comentario, ¿no? No el pueblo. Vamos muchos de aquí, que somos mayoría católicos hispanohablantes en Calixco. Destituímos una alcaldesa por ser transgénero. Tantos, ah, mira, vamos, vamos a la iglesia. Vamos a la iglesia, a rezar por el prójimo, a rezar por amor, con la excepción de los pobres, con la excepción de personas con discapacidades. ¿Qué es nuestro catolicismo? El beneficio de los ricos o Jesucristo que levantó todo un mercado destruyendo la propiedad de los banqueros? ¿Qué es nuestra fe? Yo tengo fe en el amor. And I will end there, Ms. Mayor, just make sure I get my accommodations for the other items, especially the budget. Thank you so much. I am requesting accommodations for the rest of my participations. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, any other public comment?
Next speaker is Jesús Solano.
Good evening. Jesús Solano, 426 Rosemont, Calixco. Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm here to inform you, as we all know, okay? We have a new council. We are all aware that we have a new council. Pretty soon, we're going to have a new interim city manager. And I also believe, I strongly believe, that it's time that we have a new public works director, not a manager, director. So you guys figure out how you guys are gonna have to pay for that position, okay? We need someone that literally, I mean literally, walks the streets, the sidewalks, goes out there, interact with the community, with the employees, find out what working, what's not working, what's needed, you know? How can we improve the situation? As it is right now, it's very obvious that our city public work manager is in no dire speed right now of urgency. And I'll say why, okay? There's some council members here and some community members here that we met on December 4th of last year. To fast track, because we were running late, Rodríguez Park. We met with the public works manager three, maybe four occasions. And then besides, Madam Chair from the community service also had communication through the phone. Well, to inform you, I believe that this council and maybe part of the community also does not appreciate the volunteer work from the carpenters and the electricians. That is donated time by professionals, okay? We gave a list of the items required and needed for Rodríguez Field. We met in this office December 4th. Apparently, for whatever reason, the items were not ordered maybe mid-February. They might get here maybe in May. The carpenters have finished what is pending for them, was pending for them. We need to finish painting the area there, and the electricians are supposed to come in and finish the lighting, and that's it. Now just let, for me to inform you guys, we're still waiting for the toilets, for the urinals, for the sink, for the roll-up doors. There's no benches for the dugouts, okay? So to me, that's a disservice to the community. And I'll inform this community that one of the reasons that we initiated our nonprofit Calixco Volunteer Alliance was because of the dire situation of the parks. But it's obvious that this city is not welcoming this nonprofit organization, and it's a disservice.
Thank you, Mr. Solano.
Liliana Hernández.
Buenas noches. Liliana Hernández, 2359 RMB Root Corp. Voy a hablar en español porque soy un poco más letrada en español que en inglés y porque ocupo hacerlo así. Verán, los cinco concejales que están ahorita aquí son recientes. Todos tuvieron una plataforma de cambio, de unidad, de mejorar. Mas, sin embargo, hace unos días, a la mayoría nos llegó este aviso de que quieren ahora subirnos la recolección de la basura. Y pues ahí es donde digo yo, ¿dónde está ese? Yo entiendo que esto es algo que se tiene que hacer porque viene de otra compañía, mas sin embargo, si tal vez no se le pagara tanto, se le ofrecía tanto pago al nuevo city manager, 325 mil dólares, se podría ayudar un poco para que el ciudadano común no vayamos a tener que pagar más por la basura, ¿verdad? Porque el aire vino, subió la luz, aunque ahora vamos a tener un subsidio. El agua se quedó pendiente de que nos la vayan a subir. Cualquier día llega la nueva sorpresa, y ahora nos van a subir además de todo lo que es la recolección de la basura. Pues entonces siento que esa plataforma de cambio, de unidad y todo eso fue máquinada una pluma. Yo no voté por los cinco exactamente, voté por dos de ustedes. El otro me arrepiento porque el señor Ciro me ha demostrado que debía haber votado por él. Pero sinceramente, por favor, tienen que pensar. Dieron 45 días para juntar las firmas que se ocupan para oponerse a esto, y ustedes saben que no se va a lograr, porque no se hizo con el agua, que era todavía más el aumento, y se trató de ayudar para juntar firmas. Al menos yo sí fui con mis vecinos a ver si podíamos conseguir firmas. ¿Creen que se va a conseguir para evitar la subida de la basura? Si alguien de aquí me escucha y está viendo esto, por favor, ayúdenos para que no se vaya a subir esto también, porque esto para mí es extremadamente injusto. Mi sueldo no sube tanto cada año como para conseguir pagar todo esto. Y sinceramente, y no me va a mentir mucha gente que puede ver, díganme cómo se hace para pagar algo que sube 25% al año a veces si tú no tienes más de un 8% anual en tu sueldo. Entonces para mí eso es todo por el momento, y ojalá que se pueda encontrar una solución, a lo mejor no pagar tanto a alguien y conseguir un subsidio para esto, o a lo mejor si la gente de verdad nos podemos unir para consultar estas firmas, porque esto es degradante para el ciudadano común que no gana suficiente dinero para cubrir todos estos aumentos. Muchas gracias.
Gloria Romo.
Pues muy buenas noches. No acostumbro después de que salgo de una posición venir y mucho menos portarme. Muy buenas noches, Gloria Romo, Armendaris 706, Calixco, California.
Gracias.
Muy pública mi dirección, todos invitados. Bueno, quiero decirles que en esta ocasión vengo con mis compañeros, amigos, todos los cinco, son gente buena aquí de Calixco. Ustedes votaron por ellos, y a mí me da gusto. Pero hay una situación aquí muy delicada, que veo que no se están enfocando en lo que son las finanzas públicas, y esto sí me preocupa. Me preocupa muchísimo, y desde el día de hoy en la noche voy a publicar todas las auditorías que se hicieron en el 22, nomás para que sepa de qué estamos hablando, y el teléfono del estado para que cualquiera persona, cualquiera, todos los que tengan problema, los que aumentan el agua, los que aumentan, lo que sea, puedan hablar al teléfono que yo voy a publicar, y ustedes van a ver lo que va a pasar. Ahora bien, esto de las finanzas públicas, quiero que sepan que cuando nosotros nos fuimos, lo que son 20, 21, 22 y 24, las finanzas estaban hasta arriba y empezaron a bajar. Se empezó a gastar lo más delicado, señora administradora, es lo que más, más, más me preocupa, y lo digo de todo corazón, porque me puedo quedar callada, y espero que les vengan aquí el problema muy pronto del estado. No pueden gastar la reserva. Están tres meses muy comprometidos por auditoría del 22 para los salarios de los empleados, para sus vacaciones, para su retiro, y eso no se puede tocar. Y han tocado más de 400. O sea, pueden verlo, es público, estaba esperando yo. Le pedí a Dios que esto no se tocara, se está tocando. Esto no puede seguir así. Ahora bien, hay una situación muy delicada, estamos descuidando efectivamente los servicios. Hemos pagado muchísimo dinero. Ustedes saben, señora administradora, que desde que nosotros llegamos en el 20 había dos millones de dólares que no se habían pagado de la estación de bombero Zuma. Ahí la tiene. De algún lado tuvo que salir ese dinero, más todo lo que se puso. Lo que les quiero decir es que la ciudad es muy importante que se les haya pagado, yo pienso que no, administradora, un verdadero curso de finanzas públicas a cada uno de los compañeros, porque esto era muy importante. Y sobre todo, haberseles dicho exactamente paso por paso por qué fue la auditoría, y algo para que todos sepan y reclamen. Todavía no se paga el millón y pico de dólares que se tiene que pagar a cada uno de nosotros que nos cortaron el agua en un mes. Acuérdense, el anterior administrador, desde Miguel Figueroa para acá, Miguel Figueroa, y lo digo con sus letras, mandó cortar el agua antes. La póliza y la ordenanza decía dos meses, la cortó al mes. Ahora tenemos que regresar más de un millón y pico de dólares a 1200 personas. Hagan, este, reclamen eso. No se ha pagado, ¿dónde está ese dinero? Gracias, muy buenas noches.
Next speaker is Joseph Gilín.
Please state your name and your place of residence.
Joseph Gilín, I don't live here. I have a business, Behrens Postal Services, since 2017. I don't need to say anything. So your first, first few months, 75, about 75 days. Joseph Gilín, Behrens Postal Services, business owner in Calixco. I don't need to be telling you where I live.
Do they not have to state their place of residence?
She's only doing this because she doesn't like us.
It's a request, it's not a requirement.
You see how her attitude is? Yeah, keep going. Making yourself look good. So Team Calixco goes governance right now for first, first 75 days. It's not looking good. You guys promised economic development and job creation. You guys said this involves fostering a business-friendly environment. From what I understand, behind my business, there's still a group of homeless people living in their trash cans, defecating next to our building. I don't know how that's business-friendly. This other thing that really, really irks me is that Adriana Marquez visit Calixco still hasn't been done with. I don't know where the initiative is. I would have loved to supported it. Did you get support from the council? I don't think so. So business-friendly is very, very, I would say it was pretty much a false, a false promise. Infrastructure and public services is the second thing you guys promoted. Additionally, you guys say, additionally, we must invest in our water and sewer systems. But I'm pretty sure that you guys were first for the rate increase, if I remember right. Then you guys got exposed with the video, you guys didn't like that, you called out the guy, and now, and now giving the information today of these finances, now you guys are probably gonna go, yes, and as I can predict it already. Third, you guys promised public safety. We must support our local law enforcement and first responders with the resources they need to effectively protect and serve our city. They're, they're pretty much gone. You guys didn't support them, firefighters, paramedics, wanting to leave. So where, where is it effectively protecting and serving our city? It's all BS too. Park and regulation programs. You guys say parkings, parks improve air quality, promote community, beautify the city, encourage physical exercise and a healthy lifestyle. But if you guys remember, we did a FOIA for an email that the mayor sent to us, wanting Mr. Solano to stop getting a grant for park improvements. There's tennis courts and all these things that are still broken. They were going to get money for that, and you tried to stop it. Where is that public improvement, or park improvements? Last two things. Affordable housing. You guys say, we're gonna be working with developers to create more housing options. Ray Robin lied to you, Ms. Marquez. He literally lied to you, standing right there, saying, yes, we do not provide extra services. But it says right here in Exhibit E on the, on the contract, under project description, item four, it says, "In addition, the project service providers will coordinate with the County of Imperial to connect the residents to health services and other resources." So he literally lied to you, saying that he wasn't supposed to do that. And the last thing, cross-border relations and collaborative collaboration. It is crucial that we maintain a strong collaborative relationships with our counterparts in Mexicali. So is Lisa Tylinda's uncle our new unelected bureaucrat? I guess so, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Yolanda Cunningham.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Yolanda Cunningham, y vivo en el 1901 Filmor Avenue de aquí de la Ciudad de Calixco. Bueno, es, primeramente, les agradezco a ustedes, señor del concilio, por, por escucharme y por estar tratando de, de ayudarnos a nuestra comunidad. Yo sé que cada uno de ustedes no hacen nada, no ha de ser nada fácil para ustedes, pero creo que ustedes están tratando de hacer lo correcto en cuanto a nuestra situación de hace muchos años. Muchas gracias. Y también gracias a mis vecinos por estar aquí, y mucho sé que mucha gente no está disponible porque trabaja, pero, pero gracias a Dios pues estamos unidos. Y es una oportunidad para decirles que nosotros, en la comunidad de Bravo Rodiles, que viene siendo el área de Córdoba, donde está el Parque Córdoba, la comunidad no estamos tratando de dividir, no estamos tratando de pelear con nadie, estamos tratando de ayudarnos unos a otros como comunidad. Lo único que nosotros queremos es que exista un parque donde se dé oportunidad para que todos los niños tengan, puedan practicar lo que a ellos les gusta. Ya lo he venido a repetir varias ocasiones. Nosotros debemos de tener también empatía por la gente que, que no practica necesariamente un deporte. Entonces ese parque pues fue diseñado de otra manera. Nosotros estamos tratando de entender que ya no va a ser lo que nos habían prometido, pero puede ser un parque bonito que tenga diferentes actividades para todos los niños, porque si nosotros nos enfocamos en un solo grupo, estaríamos violando también los derechos de esos niños. Estaríamos, hay niños jugando en las calles, jugando básquetbol, y sus padres pagando un impuesto. Hay otros niños que están jugando en otras áreas que no son las mejores, en las mejores condiciones, y también les podemos dar la oportunidad. Entonces en lugar de estarnos desuniendo como comunidad, pues hay que unirnos, hay que, no es bueno estarnos peleando unos a otros. La gente de esa área está tratando de ser condescendiente. Hemos soportado 20 años y no hemos tenido un parque que nos han estado cobrando y que seguiremos pagando por 20 años más. Esa es la, es la actitud que tenemos, pero también queremos que sepan que nosotros ya estamos cansados también de promesas, pero gracias a este concilio que se nos está escuchando por fin. Eso es lo que tenemos. Tenemos que tener fe en nuestras, en nuestro concilio para que tome las decisiones correctas, no para un grupo, sino para todos. Eso es lo que estamos pidiendo. Muchas gracias.
Beatriz Rosette.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Beatriz Rosette, and I'm resident of Calixco City. My comment today is about the increase, the amount, the increase in the, in the, oh, no lo tengo en español, about the... en el, oh, no lo tengo en español, sobre el reciclaje, el residuo, los residuos, el aumento de los residuos y quiero apoyar a toda la gente aquí esta noche hablando de esto y pedirle a ustedes, administradora, y los miembros del concilio, para apoyarnos, para evitar este aumento porque, este incremento porque, como otra persona dice, no tenemos, como en mi caso, soy una ciudadana de 60, 70 años. Entonces, solo tenemos un ingreso fijo. Entonces es difícil para nosotros apoyar este tipo de incrementos y realmente estamos viviendo en una base diaria. Es difícil pagar nuestros gastos porque todo es a altos precios ahora. Por favor, ayuden a nosotros, sé que están aquí para ayudar a la comunidad y por favor, escuchen nuestras voces y gracias mucho.
Gracias, señora. Jesús Rosette.
Buenas noches, buenas noches. Es un honor estar aquí esta noche y les agradezco la oportunidad de hablar frente a su gobierno en el organismo de Caléxico. Soy Jesús Rosette y vivo aquí en Caléxico, 16 Templo Court. En realidad, era vecino de señor Legazpi. Así que, he estado aquí por un tiempo. Lo que estoy tratando de decir aquí es, noté, como durante los últimos 20 años o así, cada vez que el consejo municipal tiene una oportunidad, saltan con el aumento en el porcentaje, saltan con el aumento en esto, saltan con el aumento en aquello, pero los servicios nunca están allí. Quiero decir, no tenemos más oficiales policiales como solían tener. Sabes, solíamos tener como 18 o 20, ahora tenemos dos o tres y a veces se enferman, así que tenemos uno, tal vez nada. Así que, la seguridad es muy, muy preocupante para personas como yo y mi esposa porque somos personas viejas, no somos niños más. Así que, para nosotros, ver a gente sin hogar, quién sabe de dónde vienen, dónde van y llamé a la policía y la policía trató de venir, pero algo más es considerado lo más importante, más emergencia como la mía, así que esos tipos tienen que compensar al oficial además de sus deberes regulares que tienen. Así que, creo, creo que esas cosas eran capaces de abordar, como dije, 20 años antes y no sé por qué, de repente, sabes, nada puede hacerse, nada, quiero decir, nada, nada es nada, por verdad. Quiero decir, con el agua, vamos, solía pagar 12 dólares, ahora pago casi 105. ¿Qué pasó? No obtengo tanto dinero en mi recaudación y en el pago. Y luego aprendí que ustedes pretenden contratar a una persona por más de un millón al año. Dios mío, esta no es una ciudad real. Esta es una ciudad pobre, una de las ciudades más pobres de América. ¿Cómo puede alguien ser tan egoísta para pedir un salario tan alto cuando no hay manera? La gente aquí obtiene ese tipo de dinero, quiero decir, no creo que nadie aquí obtenga ese tipo de dinero en absoluto. Quiero decir, podríamos cubrir, bueno, ¿cuántos?, seis oficiales, tal vez ocho, ¿verdad? Departamento de Fire, aprendí también que ustedes, sabes, amenazan a la comunidad de cerrar por bien, de ayudar con, sabes, las ambas, quiero decir, sí, está bien, gracias.
El siguiente orador es Jonathan Raquel.
Wow, tantas preocupaciones, Jonathan Raquel, 420 East Fifth Street. Sí, pero cierto, añadiré otra preocupación a ustedes esta noche. Así que, a cargo del Asociación de Oficiales Policiales de Calexico, estamos aquí para expresar nuestras preocupaciones profundas respecto a los problemas de pago anuales que continúan impactando negativamente a nuestros oficiales. El fracaso de la ciudad de asegurar la compensación on time y precisa es una clara violación de nuestra MOU y debe ser abordada con urgencia. Como saben, nuestros oficiales ya están demasiado trabajados, sin ánimo de ánimo sirviendo a la comunidad con recursos limitados. A pesar de estos desafíos, siguen dedicados a mantener la seguridad pública. Sin embargo, las discrepancias de pago anuales, si se trata de pagos retardados, incertidumbres o falta de compensación pueden conducir a una disminución significativa de moral, disculpe, moralem entre nuestros rango. Estos persistentes errores de pago anual no solo afectan a la estabilidad financiera de nuestros oficiales sino también arruinan su confianza en la administración de la ciudad. El CPOA forzamente exige que el consejo municipal tome acción inmediata al contratar personal de recursos humanos dedicado a resolver estos problemas. La ausencia de profesionales de la empresa de trabajo calificado ha contribuido directamente a estas complicaciones de pago anual y sin un personal adecuado en este departamento crítico, anticipamos problemas continuos que harán más carga a nuestros oficiales y a la ciudad en general. El CPOA recomienda que todos los problemas sean corregidos inmediatamente por el departamento de finanzas sin tener que esperar a la aprobación de la empresa de trabajo. Si deciden no actuar en nuestra recomendación, entonces el siguiente paso para los oficiales será presentar demandas contra la ciudad. Por violación de un acuerdo de negociación colectiva, es imperativo que la ciudad adhera a los términos que enumeran en nuestra MOU y rectifica estas violaciones anuales. Nuestros oficiales merecen ser pagados correctamente y en tiempo para el trabajo que realizan. Para recordar, estos problemas han sido traídos a la atención de la administración policial y el oficio y la información ha sido enviada desde la administración a los departamentos apropiados para corregir el asunto, sin embargo, nada se ha resuelto. Hablamos de meses desde el último año calendario. Esto es una, esto no es una cosa de una vez, sino más bien una ocurrencia repetida cada vez que hay un aumento de pago. Estamos cansados de obtener la misma respuesta de "vamos a verlo", sin embargo, nada sucede. Situaciones como esta es por lo que tenemos una pobre retención de empleados de seguridad pública. Breake el ciclo y haga lo correcto, gracias.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es Pat Ureña.
Buenas noches, señora jefa y miembros del consejo, administradora de la ciudad Patricia Ureña, 1277 Topaz Court. Vivo a través del bosque de retención llamado Ryzen, que está inundado y lleno de mosquitos. Así que, estoy usando pantalones largos porque voy a ser atropellada con brotes de mosquitos. Ha sido un problema en mi parte de la ciudad. En realidad estoy aquí para decir algunas cosas buenas sobre lo que ha pasado con la actualidad de Rodríguez. Primero y ante todo, quiero comenzar por agradecer a todo el consejo municipal aquí por participar en los primeros días que hemos estado allí y esto va a ser nuestra 12ª semana en Rodríguez, tratando de terminar una barra de comida y algunos restos. Aparte de eso, quiero agradecer profundamente al señor Solano, los carpinteros y la IBW junto con algunos de los jóvenes que han venido a ayudar en ese parque. Hay mucha pasión que va allí para hacer ese campo. Todavía estoy esperando a ver al gerente de recreación para venir y darnos ayuda en la barra de comida para averiguar qué es lo que necesitamos terminar. También quiero agradecer al gerente de trabajos públicos, ella ha estado proporcionando el material que solicitamos, pero entiendo que los baños, las particiones y las cosas que son necesarias para terminar este proyecto están bloqueados y eso es parte porque tenemos problemas con los desastres naturales que han ocurrido en California. Todo lo que vamos a tratar de conseguir va a estar bloqueado. El precio del cemento va a costar más, los baños van a costar más porque hemos tenido incendios en los palissades, los incendios post. Así que, todo se está bloqueando para todos. Así que, ni siquiera puedo imaginar qué va a pasar con el proyecto Heber Park. También, nuevamente, quería agradecer al personal de la ciudad por el trabajo que están haciendo en Coal Road. Just got my front end done on my car y I put some new shocks, pero gracias Lily por hacer todo eso. Sé que ella gobierna por unos 13 divisiones y es muy difícil para ella. Así que, si hay algo más que podemos hacer en nuestro lado como voluntarios de la comunidad para ayudarla a hacer eso. Es temporada de baloncesto, todos, los potter están de vuelta, o los Dodgers. Pero siempre es Little League en Caléxico. Y con eso dicho, solo quería expresar mis, mis preocupaciones sobre los campos no siendo adecuadamente preparados. Los voluntarios solo pueden hacer tan poco, hemos estado trabajando en Legion, Nosotros. Gracias, jefa, por hacer que un poco de ese suelo de corte salga a algunos de estos parques. Creo que lo que necesitábamos hacer es posiblemente solo comprar algunos nuevos con el dinero que fue asignado por los consejos anteriores, medio millón para Nosotros, 150,000 para Rodríguez y Legion, creo que solo pudimos conseguir algunas luces. Con la temporada de Little League llegando, queremos asegurarnos de que todos nuestros jóvenes aquí en Caléxico tengan las instalaciones atleticas adecuadas que sean seguras y útiles para todos ellos. Así que, con eso, solo estoy preguntando cuándo va a abrir Córdoba, tenemos tres pequeños campos de baloncesto allí. ¿Por qué no los sacar y empezar a usar ese campo? Gracias, gracias, señora.
El siguiente orador es Jessica Pérez González.
Buenas noches a todos, Jessica Pérez González, 525 de las Flores Street, residente de Caléxico, presidenta de la red de baloncesto de Caléxico, fundada por Little League. Y quiero comenzar con una nota positiva. Quiero agradecer a todos los en el consejo municipal y a todos en la ciudad y en los trabajos públicos que nos han ayudado a lo largo del camino. Especialmente quiero decirles gracias porque después, ya sabes, mucha discusión y trabajo logístico, parece que vamos a estar entrando en Rodríguez pronto. Especialmente quiero agradecer a la jefa Nuricumbo quien se hizo tan accesible y ha sido un gran socio en ayudarme a abrirlo, no solo para la red de baloncesto de Caléxico porque es un campo de Caléxico, ¿ok? Así que, hay otras organizaciones que también están esperando en el fondo esperando que abramos este parque para que sus jóvenes también practiquen. Así que, muchas gracias por todos sus esfuerzos y el trabajo más rápido que hicimos y que se hizo en los últimos 48 horas para hacer eso. Así que, muchas gracias por eso. Soy ciudadana, así que, por supuesto, también me preocupa los subastas de precio que están llegando. Creo que es una preocupación para todos porque creo que todos estamos en el mismo barco. Todo ha doblecido, triplicado en precio y los salarios no están mejorando. Así que, creo que estamos todos luchando y siento por cada uno de ustedes. Soy una sola madre de tres, así que, créeme, lo entiendo y estoy en el mismo grupo con ustedes. Entiendo que hay contratos que se firman y estipulaciones que se hacen en esos contratos, con Republic, por ejemplo, que hay ciertas expectativas que la ciudad y los ciudadanos que hemos dicho que nos reuniríamos. Pero, por supuesto, creo que también todos entendemos que la situación económica reciente es un poco más dura de lo que probablemente hubiésemos anticipado o podíamos haber pensado. Por otra nota, Córdoba fue mencionada y solo quiero decir primero y ante todo que como presidenta de una league tengo orgullo en intentar hacer cosas de la forma en que el proceso se llama. ¿Ok? Así que, el rumor miller detiene aquí, no invadí ningún parque. Tengo demasiado en mi plato, demasiado en mis manos, demasiados niños, ¿ok? Que estoy, que están esperando una temporada para que me preocupe por lo que podría ser. Tengo que preocuparme por lo que es y lo que puedo lograr para hacer que esta temporada suceda. ¿Amamos Córdoba? ¡Claro que amamos Córdoba! Creo que antes de eso realmente se convierte en una conversación. Creo que si, si esa no es la expectativa, si lo que todos estamos esperando no va a suceder, solo creo que queremos asegurarnos de que todo está en línea y se está haciendo de la manera correcta y eso es todo, para mí. ¿Ok? Soy una persona, aunque, y hay una organización completa y solo porque soy la presidenta no significa que mi opinión es la opinión de todos.
Gracias, señora.
Gracias.
El siguiente orador es Alejandra Guerrero.
Hola, buenas noches, señores del concilio. Más que nada vengo a agradecer pues porque he visto mucha actividad en el Parque Córdoba. Observé que pusieron una bomba de agua, de la cual se, se, me parece que también el día de hoy estuvieron trabajando en los regadores. También observé que quitaron grafiti de los juegos, que era algo que yo también solicitaba que se, que se, que se viera. Aún tenemos botes de plástico, por favor, me gustaría que tuvieran unos botes decentes porque cuando hace aire como en estos días pues se vuelan los botes de basura y también hay uno que se robaron. También, este, observé pues trabajadores ahí mismo, platicando con ellos, ellos tenían alguna inquietud que era que por qué los mandaban a diferentes partes y no trabajaban en un solo parque. Este, que trabajaran un parque y lo terminaran y así ellos se iban a otro. Ellos decían que, que la ciudad pues los mandaba a un parque, hacían una cosa pequeña y luego los mandaban a otro parque y otro parque y así y que, y que ellos pues se desgastaban y también pues gastaban su recurso o lo que tenían que hacer. Por favor, les pido este que rehabiliten los juegos para los niños, están quemados, están dañados, están rotos. Algunos les falta cualquier cosa, una cadena, un tornillo y pues nosotros como, como comunidad pues hacemos lo posible para que esté limpio. Al, ellos, este, los trabajadores nos comentaban eso pues que ellos querían que nosotros expusiéramos esta inquietud de ellos y que se presentara aquí. Recuerden pues que nosotros también necesitamos canchas para nuestros jóvenes. Algunos jóvenes de nuestra comunidad tocan las puertas para hacer travesuras, entonces queremos por favor canchas para que los jóvenes estén ocupados. Más que nada es eso lo que yo quería decirles el día de hoy, gracias.
El siguiente orador es Carla Ibarra.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carla Ibarra, 2219 Iturralde. Quería solo mencionar que una de las cosas que ha ocurrido en consejos anteriores no ha sido la falta de deseo o el amor del consejo por la ciudad. No esperamos que ustedes sepan todo y los problemas que veo que han sucedido como el parque Córdoba, como el pago anual han sido porque ustedes son las personas que están aquí pero no en cargo. Las personas que tienen cargo son sus trabajadores, trabajos públicos, pago anual, por ejemplo, te dan la guía equivocada y son las responsables, no lo son. Te pagan para hacer lo correcto. Cuando deciden algo y ellos, o usted decide algo, usted, usted los pide por su opinión. Se pagan por ir a la escuela y darles esa información. Cuando no te guían, son las responsables. Así que, solo para que lo sepan, para el pago anual usted puede tener una compañía como el pago anual, no necesita tener una persona de pago anual. He expresado a ustedes dos antes, no necesitamos pagos anuales, todo es automatizado hoy en día. Algunas cosas, obviamente, necesitamos trabajadores para otras áreas, pero en esos tipos de situaciones ustedes no tendrían ese problema que tienen ahora. Realmente recomiendo que busquen un pago anual o cualquier otro tipo de sistema de pago anual automatizado. Eso es todo lo que necesitaba decirles, muchas gracias por escucharme.
Gracias, señora. El siguiente orador es Carmen Estrada.
Buenas noches, soy Carmen Estrada, vivo en 1222 Calle de Oro. Soy presidenta y fundadora de la Liga Caléxico para el Athletic League y soy comisionada de Calzar. Pues estoy oyendo los comentarios que hacen cada una de las personas aquí. Yo, nosotros como organización hemos hecho, no tenemos ni un solo campo, se ha prometido cuatro y no lo hemos logrado. Entonces, no lo vengo a lamentar. Ahorita simplemente quiero agradecer, Juan, te voy a aplaudir a la otra junta, vamos a estar aquí felicitándote porque nuestro trabajo que hemos hecho como organización en los campos, que no son campos aptos para jugar. en los campos, que no son campos aptos para jugar, estamos rehabilitando campo. Daniel Guterres lo rehabilitamos al cien por ciento. Ahí me la llevo todos los días fertilizando, sembrando, con dinero de los papás y las personas que nos donan producto. Campo Carmen Estrada se destruyó completamente. Estoy dándome la tarea, estamos más bien en sacar adelante ese que no es campo. Sí fue campo para poner una antena, nos, nos fue muy mal ahí, la verdad. Entonces sí nos han prometido muchos proyectos, los que no se han llevado a cabo. Entonces nosotros trabajamos con dinero de la comunidad en producto y los felicito baseball porque tienen siete parques, que chulada. Nosotros no tenemos ninguno. Yo los felicito porque lo han logrado y lo han hecho bien. Yo con veintinueve años, tengo sesenta y seis años, tengo seis hijas, tengo diecisiete nietos, mis hijas todas profesionistas, mi nietos igual, y aquí estoy a pie del cañón día a día en los campos. Te lo vuelvo a repetir, Juan, gracias porque en un tiempo, hace dos años, me pararon de que no podía tocar los campos por un incidente que ni se comprobó. Pero gracias, por eso están los campos como están. Y gracias a Saldaña. Y esta vez sí te doy la gracias, Lili, porque estás con nosotros, esta vez sí. Gracias, con permiso.
Thank you, Mayor.
We received a message via email and I provided a copy to you all and it reads, "Good evening. The issue with the baseball fields has made me wonder, how many council members do we have? Why is the mayor calling and informing those who are actually working on them that the promise to provide bathrooms would not be kept? And then calling again to state that yes, they would. Paying for anything that involves city funds is a decision for the entire council, not just one. So yes, it is good to see that the promise will be kept, but why does our mayor get to try to change things by herself? That is not the definition of transparency, nor does it show respect for the other council members or the citizens. Thank you, David Saunders." We have no more public comments.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move over to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council, members of the community. Again, we thank you and thank you for your comments and your concerns. I want to thank the departments up here up front for their continuous work. I think their staffs for their continuous work on the limited staff that they have, but we are able to keep the city moving forward. I would like to start that we did remove the traffic controllers from the substation located at Friendship Park because there was some building issues, some mold issues with the AC. So we removed them from the substation and we implanted them at the fire station number one at the administration building. They do have their offices, a kitchen. It is an administration building. They are in proximity to their vehicles being parked in PD. So I think they have about a week now transitioning over, but we welcome them with open arms at the firehouse. I would like to also welcome new animal control officer, Noé Aguilar, to help to address the community services and address animal-related concerns. This week, we met with cross-border collaboration with the chief of police from Higali, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Legazpi was there, Chief Orozco, met with the Director of Public Safety to establish a cooperative effort between the two agencies. As mentioned in the public comments, this partnership aims to improve the investigations, facilitating training, opportunities, strengths, and law enforcement coordination. PD also specialized in training initiatives. A countywide less lethal platform instructor course was conducted involving multiple agencies. This aligns with the department's mission of being a leading agency and specialized training throughout the county. Investigations Unit has become a success. The newly established Investigations Unit successfully conducted its first operation, leading to the arrest of aggravated possible carjacking in the city. A trade agency support with Border Patrol and Investigation Personnel provided assistance, Calipatria Police, and ongoing extortion investigation that's currently going on. This police department also applied for a grant application for ABC enforcement. The department submitted an application for an additional grant through the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control to support enforcement efforts related to alcohol-related violations. Moving on to public works, I want to thank Ms. Follow Mead again and her staff for the continuous hard work. On February twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, public works staff and I want to give kudos to Jose Álvaro, Edgar Palacios, and Tomás Carrillo for removing all the trash at the Chamber of Commerce building so we can conduct an assessment of the building for potential use. On February twenty-sixth, public works finalized the trimming of Second Street, Third Street pollen, palm trees. On February twenty-seventh, public works manager administrative, administration and public works analyst attended the ICTC Technical Advisory Committee of Central. February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, public works staff assisted ICTC in the cleaning of the Third Street downtown for the ribbon cutting event that happened last week. Congratulations to all of those that attended. March third, public works assisted the police department with the removal of trash debris located around downtown. On March fourth, Mayor, Madam Mayor Nuri Kumbo, public works manager administrative, administration and as well as waste water staff, I want to thank Martín Bermúdez and Jesús Márquez for leading the tour, which we had the Colorado River Basin Regional Board, Quality Board. We had the International Boundary Water Commission, Border Patrol, Congressman Raúl Ries representative. We had the Mexican consulate there, IID, Imperial County Health Department, Mountain Cascade and Dynamic getting a tour of the new river project that has been, you know, in the making for years now. I would like to also advise that the city did receive the first invoice from the CDBG grant that was submitted back in October for fire station number two. We are getting a reimbursement of six hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and zero six, uh, zero six cents with the second submittal coming here shortly at the end of the month, which is an additional four hundred, five hundred thousand, so we should have a full reimbursement here by the end of the month. And that's big kudos to Ms. Follow Mead on submitting that. Moving on to Michael Coyne, planning and building. He is working on a community platform that Mr. Calderón had mentioned, going digital and having court enforcement and building permits electronically submitted. He is working with Westnet, I believe, on that. Recreation Department is having its Calixco Arts Council in collaboration with the City of Calixco invite you to the Candlelit Concert that is going to be hosted March twenty-first. Invite the members of the public and community to go out and have experience, you know, at the cultural arts and experience an evening filled with timeless beauty of classical music set in a warm, intimate candlelit atmosphere. The Calixco Art Cowl, for those that haven't been to the fair yet, but there's apparently a cowl on display throughout every city and has been displayed there at the Ivy Fairgrounds. The Mardi Gras Dance last Friday was a success, as well as the Women's Day Paint Night was last night. She wants, Ms. Norma Herardo would also invite Women in Arts Exhibit opening Tuesday, March eighteenth at five thirty. The library. I apologize for the library because I didn't mention you guys last go around, but the library will be celebrating the Read Across America with families, with a family night on Thursday at five PM. The Carnegie Hall has been open now for Monday through Friday from three to seven. Technology Center, as well, the library, library receives sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars for the lunch at the library grant program. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move over to city council comments and reports of meetings attended. Mayor Protem Legazpi.
Thank you, Mayor. The, Juan, the city manager and myself met with volunteering community members at Nosotros Park. We went over some items that are missing and we're definitely working on it. Mr. Supervisor Saldaña was there present. Also met with, also want to thank Lili Follow Mead regarding employees working on cleaning up the vandalism throughout the parks. Right now, the chief sent me a text that the officers just caught someone tagging the community center. Sorry, Norma, wish you left. So they just caught someone? Good job for our officers. Also, the mayor, the city manager, the chief police, we met with the Mexicali Police Chief here at the, at City Hall in our continuous relationship with, with both agencies. Chief Orozco had given them a tour of the Calixco Police Department. The mayor and I met with behavioral health supervisors, staff members, and spoke about assistance that are being provided to our community, along providing assistance for our unhoused individuals. We took the tour here at La Hacienda Avenue. The mayor and I met with Congressman Ries regarding the needs and ICTC and Caltrans was also present. I'm sure the mayor will put, will mention some more regarding to that meeting. Councilmember Lancel Calderón and I met with community members and stakeholders over coffee at Jack in the Box and went over topics that they wanted to talk about. And we'll be meeting with them every so often if anybody wants to meet with us also. You guys are both welcome to join us at Jack in the Box. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Thailanda.
Good evening, members of the public staff. There's a lot of things going on. We had groundbreaking for the new transportation center that's to be located on Third Street, also known as the Old Thrifty, Riedaid Building. There, the ICTC meeting happened this past week. There's a lot of things going on for our city in terms of short and long-term planning to address the traffic issues. That should be coming out within the next few months for review for the community to see what Caltrans is proposing in terms of traffic-related issues for southbound traffic. Another thing is there's parking meters going to be coming up on the agenda sometime soon, so I've been trying to go out and meet with businesses in the downtown area that are going to be immediately affected. And the feedback from the businesses is very interesting in terms of the parking meter rates. Another thing that, being in downtown and walking the streets, there's a lot of need in our downtown. It's insane to even, wow. So, so that doesn't happen overnight, but we have a long journey ahead of us for lots of these things. I do want to touch on the Prop two eighteen, we've had some comments come up here. That's something, you know, just like everything else is inherited, council after council. This Prop two eighteen is supposed to happen annually as per the contract that was entered in twenty nineteen and it became effective in twenty twenty. So a council back then went into a contract and up until twenty thirty, so we have to deal with this for the next few years. And it's supposed to increase every single year per the CPI and it hasn't. It's been deferred by previous direction of previous councils. So this is not a fun process and it's, it's one Prop two eighteen after another and just bombshells. And so it's, if anyone's interested, it happened on October second, twenty nineteen, so you can go see the entire contract that was went into with Republic Services. And then if you, you know, there's more information on the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, so what, a council meeting before, on, it's more of a shorter summary on why we're going through this for the Prop two eighteen. So we're contractually obligated and the city hasn't been keeping its side of the contract since twenty twenty. And so that's why now we have to do it because, you know, we're contractually obligated and legalities come into play and it's, it's not fun. So I encourage, if anyone wants more information, October second, twenty nineteen, it'll have the full contract on there and then February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, it'll have the summary within the Prop two eighteen item. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Márquez.
Good afternoon. So I was able to join the Juvenile Justice Commission. I was invited by Ms. Sureña to participate in their meeting, along with also volunteers members of the community. I had a great experience with them. They talked about additional services that they can bring into our community, as well as thanking the probation department for the volunteers that came and helped us in Rodriguez Park. We also talked about the community volunteers and the work that they're doing and thank you for that. I also met, had the opportunity to meet with the fire department and speak to Captain Rivera in regards to the needs of the department and also how we as council can support them. We had a meeting with Councilmember Legazpi in regards to the upgrade and makeover of our social media and communications department or, you know, information going out to the citizens. I've heard a lot of complaints and concerns in regards to citizens not being able to log on or make comments on during our meetings and I think that's very important so that we keep our transparency, as well as making sure that we're communicating to our community any events, any, any announcements coming from City Hall. I think we need, really need to look into that and we had that opportunity to talk about that. I had a meeting with members of the community to address concerns of the Home Keep Program and the services that they were supposed to be bringing to our displaced citizens. This is something that I will continue to research and work with them as well. We also had another meeting with Councilmember Legazpi in regards to the overview of the future celebrations of Calixco with Ms. Herardo and also with Ms. Herardo and Mr. Jimmy Doron. We had a meeting in regards to the Candlelit Concert that will be happening. This is so that we can bring the arts to our community and good entertainment for our citizens. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Calderón.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. February twenty-fourth, I attended the Mexican concert ceremony, which is the day of the flag, Mexican flag. February twenty-eighth, I attended the ICTC groundbreaking of the downtown transportation facility and again, thank you to all the previous councilmen that had made this happen. This would be very good for Calixco in the near future. March fourth, I toured the animal shelter located near the airport, the condition of the animal kennels and the staff offices are in very need of repair and I'd like to just thank Julio for his tour. March fourth, I toured the water facility. The water facility is antiquated but very well-maintained. In the near future, if the city wants, will have to invest in new equipment to sustain future housing and business development. And again, thank you to Ivan and Jesús for the tour. March fourth, I also toured the airport. This was my first time into the, going into this facility. I was born and raised here and never even gone in there. It's interesting to see that we have an international airport. It's antiquated, but it was very clean. Thank you for, thank Jared for being very informative and explaining to me what we, ideas of what we can do with this airport. And it also was very impressed with his bulletin board of all the famous people that have gone by Calixco. So if you ever have a chance, drop by and look at this airport. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Calderón. So I'm not going to repeat a lot of the items that were said. I'm just going to touch on the main things that I'm currently working on. When Councilmember, I mean not Councilmember, sorry, Congressman Raúl Ries was down here last week, as well as the director of Caltrans or Art District Director of Caltrans. So we had a meeting- So we had a meeting. One of the first things that, the request that I received when I took office was from residents from the Anza Bridge. And that bridge has been inoperable for quite some years now. So we met with Congressman Raúl Reese to look for methods to make repairs to that bridge and find the funding as well as, we also met with him regarding the Calixico International Airport. We know that that airport has been in the red for many years and we're faced with a situation to where we either shut it down or do something with it, and we want to do something with it. So we met with them and we're looking at alternatives to make that airport self-sustainable. And that's what we're working on. As well as, we're also, we had a tour yesterday for the New River Project. But the main point I want to make is that we are going to have to be paying for the maintenance of that New River Project. And there's an agreement between the City of Calixico, the Imperial Irrigation District, and the County of Imperial. But the amount that was set many years ago before the project started is not going to be enough. So we're also working on finding funding for the maintenance of the New River Project. And I met with various of the youth sports organizers. We're discussing the green space. There's a lot of children in our city that play soccer, that play Little League, and just all kinds of sports and activities. And that's a really good thing, but we don't have enough green space. So we have been meeting, Councilmember Calderón met with the Calixico Unified School District Superintendent. But we're going to follow up with another meeting with two of the trustees and some of their staff as well as us. And that meeting is going to cover the, it's going to discuss the impact fees. And it's also going to discuss the possible use of the schools' green areas so that we can have enough space for all our youth that want to play sports. And that's it. So we will move forward with the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, I just want to highlight on Mr. Coín's department. Just really quick, you know, I had the wrong step. So his department has issued 105 building permits for the past month of February. They've also issued 15 new cases for code enforcement. They closed eight cases and have issued 45 notices of violation for the past month of February. His staff is also working on converting the zoning map from PDF to GIS that should be online at the end of the month. And I just want to touch upon it.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to consent agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, do I motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, roll call.
Who was it?
The second.
Madam, I mean, Councilmember Marquez, second.
Mayor Diana Noricu.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailandé.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on with discussion and potential action items. Item number seven, adopt resolution appointing Richard A. Rick Daniels as interim city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 7522.56 and 2121, I'm sorry, 21221H. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
First speaker is Raúl Ureña.
Muy buenas tardes otra vez, estimado Cabildo, estimado pueblo de Calixico. A veces tenemos que refrescar la memoria porque el tiempo se va como agua. Y más cuando estamos en una posición de poder, se nos va como el agua. El junio del 2024 se corrió sin causa y se le tuvo que pagar más de 200 mil dólares a una administradora de excelencia. Su nombre era Esperanza Colio, la vice ejecutiva del Condado de Imperial por más de dos décadas. Y se dijo hace ocho meses, porque ya van ocho, nueve meses casi, un embarazo entero, un embarazo entero verdaderamente, y no hemos producido una nueva administradora o administrador. Estamos buscando de allá de Niros un pueblo más chiquito y más feo. Su administrador retirado y le vamos a pagar, corríjame, 325 mil dólares al año. Y se quejaban de nuestra esperancita que estaba jalando esta ciudad con 200 mil. ¿Se acuerdas cuando venían el Ricola diciendo, no, es mucho? Ahora, un señor con todo respeto retirado que no va a poder trabajar más de seis meses por contrato, por ley, por su retiro de una ciudad más chiquita, más fea, con menos experiencia, le van a pagar 325 mil dólares? Le van a subir el 20 a esta posición cuando Cabildos anteriores, cuando se les están yendo sus ambulancias, cuando no les están pagando, como bien dijo en inglés, que no les están pagando los oficiales de Calixico. O sea, yo escuché una administración que iba a venir aquí y que en tres meses. Nadie quiere trabajar para Calixico porque tenemos un liderazgo inepto, podrido. Y se refleja con el tiempo, mi niña, que de a mi Cabildo querido. Yo escuché que en tres meses todo iba a estar resuelto, pero se van a pasar el sextenio buscando quien tenga, quien tenga la falta de experiencia para querer trabajar en este nido de corrupción. Más de nueve meses, eso fue más que mi alcaldía. Diosito, yo nomás fui alcalde por siete meses. Yo no me gasté mi sextenio buscando administradora. Una administradora de las mejores vino a mí. Y hicimos reformas grandes. De esas reformas, esas inauguraciones, el centro de trans, todo lo que hablaron fue proyecto Esperanza Colio. Lo que van a hablar el mes que entra de Caltrans, Esperanza Colio y Raúl Ureña. Van a pasarse el sextenio hablando de los logros de Esperanza Colio y aprobando sus presupuestos. ¡Que viva Calixico!
Thank you. Next speaker is Pat Ureña.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Mr. City Manager, interim city manager. I just also wanted to mention that I attended your strategic planning about two weekends ago at the Carnegie Hall. I'm hoping that that still continues. And I know that the consultant for that was Rick Daniels, who is now going to be our interim city manager. I just wanted to express my gratitude to you for opening the door and allowing us to do a lot of the things that we've been able to do as a community. Your leadership here has been extraordinary. A lot of people say you don't have the experience, but you know what? You have the heart to do what you've done for this community. And I think everybody here has seen it. Without your leadership, we wouldn't have moved forward on a lot of our projects that we're doing. So on behalf of our community volunteers, I just want to say thank you to you for opening the door. I know your busy schedule was not always allowable, but you made the time to listen to us. And I think that, that as you go back to your news, back to the fire station with the Brotherhood, maybe we can all get a better structure there. Mr. Daniels does come from the city of Needles. It is a small community. And the last time I went there, it was ugly. I don't know what it looks like now, but I've heard he's done a really good job there. I just wish we would get a city manager, a department head for Public Works, a department head for Human Resources, a department head for Parks and Recreation so we can move forward and establish a good strategic plan. So you're on track with getting that strategic plan going. But we need to get more community members, not just me and one more person. We need to get everybody here to be part of that strategic plan. So I hope that the next time you have one, and now that you have, if you're going to get Mr. Daniels, maybe you can continue to do that strategic plan because we need it. But get the public participation because that's how you structure that strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatriz Rosette.
Buenas noches otra vez, Beatriz Rosette, residente de Calixico. Acerca del tema de, este, para tener un nuevo city manager, creo que va a ser interino con unos códigos que la verdad siempre me he preguntado, en muchas instituciones hay códigos. Te mandan decir que sí o que no. Y luego que le haces el código, no sé cuál. Al terminar yo, mi pregunta o mi exposición, quisiera saber en dónde puedo encontrar esa clase de libro código, hacia quién me puedo dirigir para saber qué dice. Porque yo no sé hacia dónde me estoy dirigiendo. Estoy aquí porque la verdad no estoy de acuerdo con que ustedes traten de atraer un city manager con un sueldo tan elevado. No sé lo que hay que hacer, yo no tengo esa experiencia. No sé si de verdad se merezca ese sueldo. Pero la verdad, la policía no puede atender mis llamadas. Vivo en un lugar donde la zona está bien peligrosa. Les llamo y hasta me conocen. Les llamo y vienen en dos horas, que porque andan en no sé dónde. Y sí creo, no creo que sea culpa completamente del Departamento de Policía sino en sí de las personas que vienen dos horas después de los agentes. Sino que no tenemos seguridad, no tenemos policía aquí que pueda cubrir todas nuestras necesidades. También hay muchas deficiencias en la ciudad. Necesita reparaciones, muchas cosas como los campos recreativos que aquí hablaron, como las banquetas, como etcétera, etcétera. Y pues la verdad, no estoy de acuerdo porque están incrementando también todas las utilidades. Y no podemos pagarlas porque es mucho dinero ahí. Entonces yo creo que los bomberos ya hoy que andan, ya están encaminados hacia los problemas de los bomberos. Qué bueno. Y que también habló una persona que pues la verdad, la policía no puede porque no tiene lo que necesita. Se necesitan más personal. Y yo quisiera, en verdad, que ese dinero, que no se debe de pagar. No digo que no pague, en verdad, pero que no se necesita mucho. Yo sé que ustedes, al principio yo fui, cuando estaban algunos candidatos de aquí que ganan mi aprobación, hablando muy bien. Yo sé que no es lo mismo, ay, yo voy a hacer, que cuando ya estamos allí y nos enfrentamos a tantos problemas que no se pueden resolver de la noche a la mañana. Pero sí sé que con nuestro pequeño sentido común podemos ver que es mucho dinero el que se quiere pagar aquí.
Thank you, ma'am.
Muchas gracias.
Next speaker is Jesús Rosette. Jesús Rosette.
Good evening. Again, Jesús Rosette, residente here in Calixico. Thank you again for this opportunity. And actually, basically, I'm on the same page. I just can't believe, I mean, how old guys, you know, the old school can handle every single item you guys try to deal today without much sweat at all. I mean, they did a job pretty good. I mean, I know perhaps some of your relatives, old guys, you know, that pass away. You know, but, I mean, you guys maybe should ask them how they did it. How, talk to them, you know, how they managed to handle the city without raising the water? I mean, I remember the first time I get the raise of the water. It was a big shock because we are a community made up of farmers, seasonal jobs. This is not Los Angeles, this is not San Diego. You know, this is something you guys need to put your foot on the floor. This is one of the poorest cities in the whole America. So we should take care of that. We should be honored, the mission statement you just had in front of everyone say that we place to provide effective and efficient services in a courteous and progressive manner to improve, to improve the quality of life for all. I mean, that's all we ask, honor your work. Thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Norma Aguilar.
Good evening. My name is Norma Aguilar, 839 Hebra Avenue. I have come to these chambers a lot of times in the past 10 years regarding, regarding the homeless in Calixico, okay? Yeah, and whether you like it or not, they're human beings. For those of you who've grown there.
I'm sorry, Ms. Aguilar, we're discussing item number seven, which is the city manager?
You called my name.
Oh, I didn't call it, was it?
It says here, item number seven. Okay, I apologize.
Okay, so we'll see you back for item number nine. You want to talk about city manager? Okay.
I, I'm not going to repeat anything that was previously said, but I don't see that Mr. Contreras is doing a bad job. I don't see why we have to pay someone an extraordinary amount of money to come out of retirement and when that time will be limited. You've got someone here that is doing a job that knows, has learned on the job and is working with the team. At which I'm also supporting what the police department employees are saying. And how do you think the rest of the staff feels when they are so understaffed themselves? They're spread so thin themselves. And then you turn around and you hire someone for 100,000 more. Don't you think something like that could help with part-time in business services? In anywhere you look, we are paper-thin. And I'm not going to forget or take, miss the opportunity to remind you that the significant part of the funding of the budget for Calixico comes from Measure H. And that's not money that should have been there. But because of shenanigans of past politicians, there's a loophole in which that money can be taken and to used for whatever the current leadership wants it to be. I've been speaking about that since 2012. Leave Juan. Keep looking for your star. But if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Jonathan Ranquer.
Jonathan Ranquer, 425th here. Actually, I was here prior for CPOA, now I'm here as a resident. It's kind of hard to kind of follow with what she just mentioned. But to piggyback off what Ms. Ureña mentioned, excellent work, Juan Contreras. Extremely excellent work. You've always returned our emails, you've always been there for anything that we needed. Never shied away from doing what was right. But I understand it. Your work family needs you and you need to get back. And seeing them down makes you want to go back and do what's right. So kudos to you for doing that, respectful, very respectful action on your own part. And we need to understand that we need structure in the city now. And if bringing Mr. Daniels is that, so be it. So be it. I don't know if you guys have seen The Mandalorian, but this is the way. That's a quote they say. So if this is the way, let's go with it. We need structure, whatever time it takes. Let's make it happen. On that aspect, we need to attract. On that aspect, we need to attract experienced and competent employees. We're looking for them, so help us at the police department make more of that and bring better protection and better employees for the city and the residents of Caléxico. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Letizia Cota.
Good evening, city council, Ms. Mayor, community. I have to concur with some of the comments that were made earlier. I don't understand why bring someone in that you're going to pay over 100,000 dollars more when you have somebody already, I mean, that learned, because when he first started, he had a few near misses and maybe may still be doing it, but wait until you find someone permanent. And then the other issue is, yes, and I hate to sound redundant, but you guys let go of a city manager that was doing the work of two positions, running the city and also writing grants, bringing, whatever, and stop making faces, okay? Because you're the role model out there and you were the elected official. So, whether you agree with me or not, I don't make faces when you say something, okay? So the issue is, you're going to pay one person 100 plus more and then you're creating a grant-writing position for 100 plus thousand dollars. I read that we're at risk of losing our ambulances. We barely have police officers and I know somebody said that let's bring good employees. Now, as far as I'm concerned, what we have, they're good. They just can't handle the workload. You have what, and I'm just going to say numbers, doesn't necessarily mean that those are the numbers, but you have 10 people doing the work of 40. How is that possible? If some of you were not even able to handle one job. The other thing is, yes, I agree with what Ms. Aguilar just said, leave Mr. Contreras there. He's already there. Wait until you find somebody that's going to be permanent, that's going to be able to do well for the city. We're in dire need, there's a lot of stuff that the city needs. And you know what, I also heard your promises and I heard that everything was going to be taken care of. And guess what, no, things are worse. So you guys need to wake up and smell the coffee and make, and actually make the correct decisions, not for your venganza or your anger towards people, but for the betterment of the community that elected you. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
I received two comments via email that I will read. The first one says, "Good evening, so the solution to our city manager issue is to hire another interim city manager but pay them a higher wage. Please don't say that it is to free up Mr. Contreras to focus full-time on the fire department when there is no additional support being given to him. How many paramedics did we, did we or are we going to lose? Based on the interview with our mayor, she feels like keeping things at status quo is sufficient when it is obvious that they are overworked and in need of support and help. Instead of trying to boost actual lifesavers in our city, it was decided to boost the salary of the city manager's position and throw in a grant writer's position. Also, why is it that local media have information two days ahead of the council meeting concerning the hiring of this temp manager? Shouldn't that have been dealt with by our council members in a meeting rather than looking like a backdoor deal? The change that keeps getting pushed out from certain council members at the dais and on social media is not looking so much like change but rather Raoul 2.0. Hopefully this trend can stop and focus be placed where it needs to be rather than what certain members want. Thank you, David Saunders." The next comment says, "Dear Mayor Noricumbo and honorable city council members, I am writing to strongly recommend Rick Daniels for the position of interim city manager. If you have the opportunity to bring Rick on board, I urge you to seize it without hesitation. His extensive experience and proven track record make him an outstanding candidate for this role. During his tenure in our city, Rick's leadership brought us $24 million Health and Wellness Center at no cost to our city or its residents. This achievement allowed us to develop a robust recreation program that continues to provide immense benefits to our community. Additionally, Rick played a pivotal role in a critical expansion of our city's boundaries through the annexation of key freeway-serving commercial areas, securing long-term economic benefits to our city. I am confident Rick will not only meet but exceed your expectations, bringing positive and lasting contributions to our city. Should you need any further information, please feel free to contact me. Best regards, Russell Betts." No more public comments.
Okay, thank you. So at this time I'll bring it back to the council, any comments before?
Mayor, you'd just allow me to go to terms with the contract, so we put it clearly in the record. Before using interim city manager appointment and a resolution that includes an employment agreement within the city and Mr. Richard Daniels, let me go to some of the terms. It's a one-term appointment for 90 days from March 6th to June 9th of this year. However, the agreement could terminate earlier if the city hires a permanent city manager before then or if the city or Mr. Daniels would terminate the agreement before June 9th. Compensation, it's at a rate of pay of $105.75. This is a CalPERS formula that's used to arrive at a rate of pay that is based on a salary of $220,000 per year, and the rate of pay per hour is 105.77. As a CalPERS retired annualed, Mr. Daniels can only work a maximum of 960 hours per fiscal year. And that's because he's a CalPERS retired annualed. Under the agreement, there are no benefits, no overtime, no paid leave or holiday. So all you're paying is a rate pay of 105.77 per year. I also do want to point out that we are making one revision to section four termination, that's section 4.1 and 4.2, which will now provide that either the city or Mr. Daniels can terminate the agreement for any reason upon providing 14 days' notice to the other party. And background, Mr. Daniels is previously a city manager of Needles, also the city of Desert Hot Springs and also worked for some other regional organizations. With that, I'm not sure if council has any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Okay, does the council have any comment before we vote?
Yes, I have a comment. First of all, I want to thank Juan Contreras for doing an outstanding job. He got big shoes to fill, I mean, you've always been there for everyone. He's always been there for our community, our people out there, but the fire department needs him and Juan wants to go back. And that's what we're doing, the fire department needs a lot of help and in order for them to obtain assistance and help, they need Juan back. So it's one of his choices also that he wants to go back and work with him and they need him. And regarding to Mr. Daniels, we got to meet him at a special council meeting. He was the coordinator, kind of like a referee. And what we've learned from Mr. Daniels is that he has a wealth of knowledge and experience as a city manager and in economic development, and that's something that we need. He was very well-respected by our department heads during that special meeting and he believes in the chain of command, at the same time, he will also be meeting with all employees. He's a people person, he's a people person. He has knowledge and structures on how to run the city. He believes that every employee is important. He values his employees and I believe that he's going to do a great job for us, thank you.
Thank you, council member Thailand.
So there's a lot of mixed feelings. From the time that this began, I think I can say that we haven't had many qualified applicants. It's taken a very long time and it's hard to attract talent, especially when we have an interesting, unique reputation. There are cities hiring that are competition to us, El Centro, Brawley, they have higher pay. If you go look, there are city managers and the cities are actually smaller and they don't get the cross-traffic that we do. That's one of the concerns that we've heard up here. We've also heard that we're one of the poorest cities, we're not. We shouldn't be one of the poorest cities. We didn't get here overnight, we should actually be one of the richest cities in the valley. And we're number two riskiest city for the state auditors. We used to be number five and we got promoted to number two. We have every department understaffed and Mr. Contreras has done phenomenal. And there's not enough words to convey how amazing he's been. And to me, one of the most important characteristics of an individual working in this type of position is customer service. And he's given the highest level of customer service I've ever seen someone give here and time and effort and gone above and beyond. It's very important to allow him to go back to the fire department because we express our concerns with, you know, the understaffing and the need there and we do need focus, that's why we need a department head. We don't have a department head there because currently he's playing two hats. And we need structure. It's shocking to be sitting here and learn information from CPOA representatives that we didn't know. And that all starts, you know, internally. So there's things that we need to make sure as a council get addressed and it starts with moving around the structure and putting people where they need to go. And that has nothing to do with performance because Juan has been amazing. You've been amazing, phenomenal, and there's not enough words. So thank you for everything that you've done in this transition and that you will continue to do. And, you know, if I didn't think that this was an important move, I wouldn't be one to want to support it. But we haven't reached the state of our city overnight. It's been years of bad politics, mismanagement and lack of leadership. And I am really tired of seeing these things moving and we want, we want to rebuild our reputation and attract qualified staff. And it's so important and it starts here, not fighting, not, you know, professional or personal attacks. So I, I think that this is really important, we're lucky to have this type of contract before us. So that's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, council member Marca.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Contreras for all his help during this time. I know that it wasn't easy and I can only imagine, but thank you for your support. We've heard from the community and thank you.
Thank you, council member Calderón.
Yeah, thank you, Juan. First, I want to take this time to publicly thank you. Thank you for your dedication, your hard work as an interim city manager and fire chief. Your leadership and worth ethics during these past eight months are greatly appreciated. You're definitely, you definitely walk the walk and talk the talk. And I think it was proven here today when our community called you, you responded. You took care of the issues they had locally and so forth, and that speaks volumes of you. But I am in favor of this item for several reasons. One, Mr. Daniels will only be an interim city manager for 90 days. Two, Mr. Daniels not only brings municipal experience, he also brings experience in wastewater management, transportation, economic development and planning and public work. I don't know if you know and have been reading the news here, our city is in serious, has serious issues with the fire department. Therefore, requires Mr. Contreras' leadership and expertise to go back and find solutions to maintain the level of medical care and fire response that our citizens deserve. And I'll give you a good example, and this is not just on this watch. Since COVID, since COVID, our firefighters have not taken a vacation. So what does that tell you? Mental health issues, fatigue, those are the issues that we have to take care of. And that's why, Mr. Contreras, I applaud you because since I've been here in two months, I have never seen someone back up and support their staff like you have. Your department is lucky to have you. And again, I know that we'll do great things and hopefully get that fire department going again and get our paramedics back. And last but not least, Mr. Daniels, with the experience that he has, he hopefully, he will help us or help this council get the right city manager for this city. And that's all I have.
Thank you, council member Calderón. I also want to start with thanking acting city manager Contreras. He has done the, demonstrated what a fireman does when everybody runs out, you guys run in, and that's pretty much what you did for our city these last eight months, eight, nine months. So we're very appreciative of that. I want to clear that out because some people don't believe it. We really appreciate what you've done for the city. But it's time that we, that you do go back to your department because of the situations that we found out, you know, two weeks ago, the issue with the paramedics. And we all know that public safety is one of our most concerned, you know, that citizens are more concerned about and as are we. So that's the reason why we're doing this move. Otherwise, if it weren't because of that, we would have, he would have stayed on until we hired the permanent city manager. But it just so happened that we did have a strategic workshop and Mr. Contreras actually found us, Mr. Rick Daniels, to come down and lead that workshop. And he, he showed us what the CPOA gentleman came up to speak about, structure. That's one of the things that I spoke about at this strategic workshop. That's my number one priority, that's the number one deficiency that I find that from the city since the first day I stepped foot into City Hall as the mayor. We definitely need structure. I know a lot of people blame our employees about issues with the city. All I can tell you is that from being here, we have really good employees. We have employees that are dedicated, that have stayed on under a lot of duress, being short-staffed. And the problem is not the employees, and I'll tell you that right now. The problem is a lack of structure. And I tell you that as a businesswoman, you can't run a business if there's no structure and there hasn't been any structure in, I don't know, at least 10 years. So that's what Mr. Daniel brings. So he brings structure, but what we're moving on today is that he also knows what we need and we trust that he knows what we need, which is why we're bringing him on board so he can find us that permanent city manager that we can have here for many, many years to come. So that we're not rotating city managers as has been happening in the past. So he knows what we need, he spoke to all our department heads, he spoke to all members of the council and he's pretty much been through a lot of things in his past experience and we trust that he's going to get us the right person and he's going to keep the ship afloat until we do that and we expect that to be in less than 90 days. So with that said, I want to continue with item number seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Until we clarify, part of that motion is the revisions to section 4.1 and 4.2, making the termination mutual with 14 days' notice.
Okay, thank you. So second is council member Thailand.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Victor Legasti.
Yes.
Council member Lisa Thailand.
Yes.
Council member Adriana Márquez.
Yes.
Council member Lorenzo Calderón. Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item number eight. 2024-25 Second Quarter Budget Status Report and Resolution to Amend the 2024-25 Budget. Do we have a presentation?
The item that I have before you is the Fiscal Year 2025 Second Quarter Budget Report. The purpose of this review is to analyze and report on revenue and expenditure trends as of December 31, 2024. This represents 50% of fiscal year 2025 elapsed. Citywide expenditures. Combined, all citywide expenditures are within their six-month budget trend, starting with the general fund. At the halfway point of the fiscal year, general fund expenditures totaled $10.7 million out of the $23 million budget, representing 47% of expenditures. This aligns with the expected expenditure trend for the first six months of the fiscal year. The next category is operating grant funds, which includes Measure H, operating grants, housing funds, water, and wastewater. At the halfway point of the fiscal year, operating grant fund expenditures totaled $8.6 million out of $30.3 million budgeted, representing 29% of expenditures. This is mainly due to un-purchased capital, hourly equipment, due to lack of staff resources. And moving on to the capital debt fund, which includes capital projects, debt service, CFDs, and internal service funds. At the halfway point of the fiscal year, capital debt fund expenditures totaled $8.4 million out of the $123.4 million budgeted, which represents 7% of expenditures. And this is mainly due to delayed capital projects, awaiting staff resources, and water, wastewater financing solutions. In total, citywide expenditures represent 16% of the total budget across all funds. Moving on to general fund expenditures. As previously mentioned, the general fund expenditures at the halfway point of the fiscal year stand at 47% of the annual budget. Police, animal control, and fire are exceeding their six-month salary and benefit budget due to overtime costs driven by job vacancies. However, these overages are currently being offset by savings in other operating expenditure line items. Library expenditures are trending slightly above 50% due to the cost of summer programs that took place at the beginning of the fiscal year. Overall, the general fund is trending as expected at the halfway point of the fiscal year, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the departments, the department heads for their diligence in managing their budgets and staying within their approved Budget amendment requests. As part of this budget review, each revenue source was analyzed to assess its trend at the halfway point of the fiscal year. Based on this review and analysis, the following budget amendments are recommended. Property tax. As of December, we have received the first secure property tax distribution of the fiscal year, which represents 55% of the annual distribution. Based upon current receipts, the annual property tax projection has been increased by $118,000. Business licenses. Due to enhanced enforcement efforts by city staff, business license revenue is trending higher than expected. As a result, the projected revenue has increased by $100,000. Cannabis. Two cannabis businesses have been temporarily shut down due to non-compliance. Therefore, this revenue source has been reduced by $60,000. Transient occupancy tax, TOT. Currently, two hotels located within the city are undergoing renovations and are temporarily closed. As a result, TOT revenue has been reduced by $165,000. Both hotel renovations are expected to be completed before the end of the fiscal year. Parking meters. Due to prior council direction, parking meter revenue collection has been stopped since October of 2024. This has led to an additional decrease in revenue of $110,000. Ambulants. Newly increased federal and state ambulance reimbursement rates have led to an increase in the revenue projection for this line item of $150,000. And finally, fire inspection fees. Due to the enhanced enforcement efforts conducted by staff, fire inspection fees are trending higher than expected. As a result, the projected revenue for fire inspection fees have increased by $50,000. So after incorporating all of these adjustments, the fiscal year 2025 general fund revenue projection has been increased by a total of $83,000, bringing our total adjusted revenue budget to $23 million. General fund fund balance update. At the last council meeting, two actions were taken that increased the salary and benefit budget for the general fund by $69,198. At that time, updated revenue projections were unavailable, so the cost increase from these two actions were added to the annual vacancy allowance of $500,000, raising this line item to $569,198. However, with the current increase in revenue projections, these budget augmentations can now be supported, allowing the annual vacancy allowance to be restored back to $500,000. As a result, the net increase in general fund revenue after offsetting the expenses is $13,802, which updates our fiscal year 2025 projected ending fund balance to $4.4 million. With this increase in the fund balance of the general fund, the city can meet its target fund balance reserve policy at 69 days, surpassing the required 68 days as outlined in the city's reserve policy. Capital program updates. By request of the city's Public Works Manager, the proposed... outlined in this slide increase the budget for three capital program projects, starting with project 91-916 for the coal boulevard between ML King Avenue and Balquer Road project, increases the fiscal year 2025 capital program budget by $1.1 million. This increase is requested from Fund 233, Measure D. The next project, which is 91-917 for the sidewalk improvement project, increases the fiscal year 2025 capital program by a total of $555,000, and this increase is requested from both Fund 233, Measure D, and Fund 234, TDA Fund. And the next project, 91-921 for the Cesar Chavez demolition, increases the fiscal year 2025 capital program by a total of $25,000. This increase is requested from Fund 411, local capital projects. The requested combined capital program budget amendments total $1.7 million, bringing the fiscal year 2025 capital program budget to $123 million. The fiscal year 2025 budget was developed with the assumption that water, wastewater rates would be increased at the beginning of the fiscal year. However, this does not happen. Without the anticipated rate increases, the water fund is unable to fully staff operations, cover operating costs, maintain the 125% debt service coverage committed to the 2020 revenue bondholders, or fund the current and future capital programs needed to maintain the system's infrastructure. At current rates, the city's debt service ratio stands at 94%, which is 31% below the required coverage. Even with the rate increase effective in May 2025, the city's debt service ratio would still fall short, reaching only 109%. This means that the city will need to still reduce operational costs to meet the required coverage ratio. Given the critical nature of this situation, immediate action is required to address the Similar situation exists with the wastewater fund, but with a different outcome if user rates are adopted in May of 2025. At current rates, the city's debt service ratio stands at 98%, which is 27% below the required coverage. However, with a rate increase effective in May 2025, the city's debt service ratio is projected to meet the required coverage at 133%. Similar to the water fund, immediate action is required to address the issue. Another challenging fund is the airport fund. Currently, the airport fund is not generating sufficient fuel sales and lease revenues to cover operational expenditures. As of June 30, 2024, the fund's fund balance has been depleted. In November of 2024, the council directed a transfer of $140,000 from the general fund to cover the ongoing deficit. However, the consideration of a new operational plan and/or user rate increase is necessary to ensure the continued operation of this fund. In conclusion, the general fund is in track with the fiscal year 2025 adopted budget and is meeting its target fund balance reserve policy. The water, wastewater, and airport utility enterprise funds require additional work on rate adjustments and operational updates to ensure the long-term sustainability of their operating debt service and capital budgets. And it is my recommendation that the council approve the budget resolution to amend revenue sources to reflect current budget trends and increase the budget for various capital projects. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Chaparro. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have Speaker Raúl Ureña.
Mr. Attorney, Ms. Mayor, since this is a numerical item, I would like to request accommodations of 1.5 time for this particular comment. I do have a disability. That, yes? Okay, four and a half minutes.
Voy hablarlo en español otra vez porque otra vez. En el año 2022, el estado, el estado querido Cabildo que ustedes no estaban aquí, recomendó, recomendó muy fuertemente para combatir la corrupción en el presupuesto de Caléxico en esta ciudad, y esto es oficial de la auditoría del estado. Se tiene que poner en español y en inglés para que el pueblo entienda el presupuesto, pero aquí ni la decencia de poner los números suficientemente grandes como para que el público los lea. Y luego, hablando de los excelentes empleados que tenemos, hay que hablar verdaderamente del verdadero presupuesto. Attachment B, concitación, página 13, qué dice, qué dice los números? Porque claro, cualquiera le pueden pagar aquí para decir, pues sabes que no se va a acabar el dinero. Pero, ¿qué costo? ¿A qué costo? Hay ingresos, hay gastos, egresos, y tienen un resultado neto. Más ingreso, menos gastos, y es igual a el resultado. ¿Cuál es el resultado? Página 13, attachment B. Los ingresos no van para arriba, se quedan igual. Por primera vez, no suben tanto, no sé por qué. Los gastos están medio raro, y quisiera clarificación si verdaderamente sabemos lo que estamos haciendo. En la última línea de ingresos, Measure H transfer, un millón 2021, un millón 2022, un millón 2023, 1.1, 2.8 millones año 2024. ¿O es un error de contabilidad que de nuestros excelentes empleados? A lo mejor hace falta una contadora que era city manager de la WABC, certificada binacional, quizá. A lo mejor por eso pasan estos errores. A lo mejor lo pusieron en la columna incorrecta, pero eso no cambia el resultado. Por favor, hablen de esto porque si no lo hablan, es como que si no lo hubieran leído. Net annual operating results. Neto, resultado. 2021 positivo 858, 2022 positivo 400,000 dólares, 2023 positivo 694,000 dólares, que es el neto del año 2024. Anybody have an educated guess? Una ecuencia, cero, 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 cero. Y la reserva, que es nuestro guardadito. No se dijo cero, aquí se me olvidó muchas cosas en esta presentación a nuestra estimada directora de finanzas, pero la reserva. Año 2021, 2.9 millones. Reserva 2022, 3.5. Reserva 2023, 4.7. Reserva actual, 4.2. Ya nos comimos medio millón de la reserva del guardadito, del savings account, para que me entiendan, para llevar al flote de cero este presupuesto. Es business, right? We're business individuals. Es una suma muy sencilla que estamos robando de la reserva necesaria para tener credibilidad con el estado. Estamos violando sus recomendaciones de transparencia. Señor Alcalde, ¿se me puede ver si me estoy dirigiendo usted? Sí, no parece que estás captando. No parece que estás captando. No parece que están... Quisiera la atención de la alcaldesa. Estoy hablando con los representantes.
I can hear you. I don't have to look at you. I can hear you.
Ay, qué respeto, qué respeto. Okay, pues a lo mejor cuando venga la discusión, pues vamos a hablar de los números sobre la mesa. Y para acabarla, y para acabarla de difundir, el presupuesto de traffic control el año pasado...
Thank you, Ms. Ureña. That was four and a half minutes.
No fueron cuatro minutos, hombre.
It was four and a half minutes, yeah.
Sí, okay, muy bien. Disculpa, era mucha información. Que Dios los bendiga. Y que viva Caléxico.
My name is Daniela Flores, speaking on behalf of Imperial Valley Equity and Justice Coalition. I want to... I know this is a new council, so I'm going to make you guys aware. If you haven't read the October 2022 report from the state auditors, I recommend that you do. It's called "City of Caléxico: Past Overspending and Ongoing Administrative Deficiencies Limit Its Ability to Serve the Public." So there's a huge oversight happening today because the information that's being presented about the financials of our city should be presented in a language where 75% of the community understands, and so this presentation should be in Spanish. Prior council was already taking steps towards repairing that recommendation that was caught in this 2022 report. I'll read to you. You can look yourself the page. I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going to quote it. "To facilitate its residents' participation in the budget process, the city should establish a policy before developing the fiscal year budget to make key portions of public financial documents, including proposed and adopt budgets, available in a sufficient number of languages to ensure that at least 75% of residents can obtain the documents in their primary language." I only see this document. I don't see it available in Spanish. I looked through the attachment. It's also not available in Spanish. And so, you know, if you're watching meetings right before you took office, Esperanza Colio would support providing a translation. I know that there is interpretation services, but the report clearly states that documents should be able to be obtained in that language. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Carla Ureña.
Thank you again, Carla Ibarra, 20219, Iturralde. I spoke with you all, most of you, not all of you, regarding experience and a little bit better knowledge for our new finance director. I did see a lot of discrepancies, but that's not really the biggest... I did see a lot of discrepancies, but that's not really the biggest problem here. The, when they wanna raise in the water department and the sewer, the only way they have gone is increase the water. There's been two races, there's been two bonds in the water because we're supposed to do, like you said, it's old, and it's, but not because there was no money, it's not because we owe it, we owe it, and we owe it for 30 years, and we cannot work on the improvements because it was poorly done, because Public Works does not have the experience. They're never gonna do anything if you continue the Public Works people that you have until you get someone with experience, because that needs development experience. So with that said, if our revenues are $23 million and most of that is going to payroll, we're never gonna get out of that hole.
Can you raise the mic so we can hear you?
Pardon me. So that is the concerning part. There's no money left over for any projects because our debt coverage is gonna get only worse and worse and worse. So this, with the budget that is done today, we are miscompliance. I just wanted to let you know how important it was for us to hire someone with better experience than what we hired. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I'll bring it back to the council. Does the council have any comment? Councilmember Thailanda? Anybody else?
Were we aware of the requirement for these documents to be provided in Spanish for our citizens?
I was not.
Mr. Contreras?
Excuse me?
Mr. Contreras.
We did have the document that had mentioned by, I believe, Ms. Flores from previous state audit, but we did not provide the translation in Spanish, which we can work on and have him upload the information. I mentioned we are providing translation services, but specifically it should have also been done in Spanish.
I do apologize to the citizens, and let's make sure that this does not happen again, please.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Calderón? Yeah, but you comment, Councilmember Calderón?
Ah, no sé, ya, con él. Love. Okay, so I have, the only thing, I also wanted to reiterate that next presentation, if we can have it in Spanish. Also, just wanted to point out, obviously, the areas where we have a concern, we are aware of. I had mentioned the airport situation, which I'm working, which I'm working on with Congressman Raul Reese and the senator's office, as well as Department of Caltrans, and looking for funding sources and mechanisms to where the airport can be self-sustainable. That's one of the issues, and the other issue is the water in the sewer. Well, we all know about that. So what we're trying to do is look out for fundings. We have, we have reached out to some organizations that have told us there might be some funding out there for the repairs that we need. So we're working on that. With that said, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, second?
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Calderón, second by Councilmember Thailanda. Roll call, please.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, item number nine. It is for the record, the first reading. I'm saying it now. Yeah, it's for the record. So first reading, introduce an ordinance regulating camping on public or private property. Mr. Coin?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. This item before you tonight is an introduction and first reading of camping ordinance. Sorry. I'm pretty tall, so, sorry. Last summer, the Supreme Court reaffirmed cities' rights to regulate camping within their jurisdictions. And since then, many cities have adopted camping ordinances. What we're doing tonight is providing you an ordinance that mimics what a lot of cities have recently adopted in terms of best practices for regulating ordinances. Our approach is two-pronged, so we would allow for abatement on both public and private property when it's an immediate health and safety threat. For example, if there's a hazard that's present, if the camping is blocking paths of travel or sidewalks or impeding the right-of-way, or if there's illicit activity associated with the camping, such as drug use or defecation in public, that would allow for what's called summary abatement. And that would allow us to immediately confiscate property and dispose of it. Then there's the regular abatement process that the ordinance would establish. And that's typically what we do for most public nuisances is go through the abatement process that's already in our municipal code. And it is, for the city of Caléxico, we have been, our approach has always been compassionate. We normally provide warnings to the public. Where we try to, so in this circumstance, with our code enforcement division, we would provide proper notification through our abatement process. We would provide notices and work with folks living in encampments and try to link them up with social services. It's only for encampments that present an immediate health and safety risk that we would pursue summary abatement. And that's basically what the ordinance would establish.
Okay, thank you. Chief of Police Orozco?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I wanted to address to you today in reference to this ordinance. I've received a bunch of phone calls today in reference to this ordinance, and there's a lot of confused information going out. And I just kinda wanted to share a little bit of it. This ordinance isn't a license to go out and harass homeless or arrest them. This ordinance is just an extension of what's already on the books. We already have an ordinance that's for public property. This would just extend it out to private property. As a perfect example was the Fiesta's encampment, where it was on private property. The owner wanted us to, the owner that was stated to us wanted it out there, but they weren't legally capable of doing it. So this gives us the tools to start doing that. Of course, our number one goal is to offer help, because that's the only way really we're gonna deal with the problem, is getting them into services, getting them help to resolve the problem. But then, you have to deal with then the issue then when they don't want to. But that's what the law is already there for. It's already on the books as far as for public, and this is just, it's gonna extend out to private property. And again, this isn't an ordinance that's gonna say the police is gonna go out there, grab them, drag them, take them to jail. No, this is an ordinance to, at the worst, cite them, and that's as far as it's gonna go. It's a progressive, it's a progressive action.
This is the ordinance. This sounds familiar. Is it violation? Do you want me to read it?
No, no, I know. It's the same.
Order? Okay, carry on, chief.
So, again, I'm explaining to you what the police department's stance is on this. I've met with a lot of stakeholders here. I've met with county mental health. I've met with social services. I've met with a lot of stakeholders here. And again, I reiterate that this isn't a one-stop, let's fix it. It's, we're gonna be compassionate about it, we're gonna provide help, we're gonna reach out to our partners, our, you know, our private partners to help.
Okay, thank you. Do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Maribel Padilla.
Maribel Padilla, I live in El Centro, California. I don't even know where to start, people, really. Oh, you don't need to look at me. That's okay. You guys started by reading that on your wall, "To improve the quality of life for all." I guess the homeless population does not fit in your all. How nice of you to bring this up on Ash Wednesday. There is no greater hate than Christian love, is what they say. So, you know, I really, you guys know how I am. Let's cut the crap. Introduce an ordinance regulating camping on public, private property. It should read, introduce an ordinance regulating homeless on public and private property. I guess you got tired of cutting down trees, so you approved this, or whatever, I don't know. I wanna know, Thailanda just said that there's money, and then there's no money, and why don't you do something to create shelters? Oh, Mr. Orozco, since you said, you're not, you're getting nice. Penalty for violation, not to exceed 100 for the first offense. For a second subsequent offense, 500, and then imprisonment for three months. So, I don't know, I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt, Mr. Orozco, because I've spoken to you, okay? I don't trust this council at all. They're recallers. They ran on this. They ran against the homeless. I'm old enough to remember when Nuri Gumbao used to feed with Brownback Coalition, with her family. Yeah, it was fashionable back then. Not no more. We're the mayor, so let's go after the homeless. I wanna know, Mr. Orozco, when this passes, they will pass it. Well, I have doubts. I'm hoping two people on this council know better, other people that actually help with the homeless too, before turning on them. Would you go after Thailanda's mom, who has a homeless person living on her property? I mean, they're there. I threw there today. I brought three of the homeless people to witness this, to see who their council is, who's going after them. Because you not only say that, private ways, now you're talking about the new river bottom, or the river bottom. Some of them live there, out of sight, out of mind. They're trying to stay out of sight, so you guys don't do nothing. But you're gonna go after that too. So I don't understand how it is that all of a sudden we're being nice to and to these people and stuff. You're not. It says here, "These individuals opt to not use available temporary shelters." Oh, are you talking about the neighborhood house, who gives three months in the summer and two in the winter? So what, what about the rest of the year? Instead of paying $100,000 more, so whatever it is, you guys are gonna pay your new manager? After you threw out the one that you had, the golden goose? Why don't you use that money?
Thank you, Ms. Padilla.
Ajá, ahí los quiero ver en misa, persinándose a todos.
Next speaker is Beatriz Roset. Beatriz Roset.
Okay, thank you. Aquí otra vez. Ahora escogí el lado donde se habla un poquito más fuerte. Recuerdo que cuando las candidatas, y que estoy hablando con respeto, pero también quiero expresar mi opinión de cuando ustedes se estaban postulando. Fui a una de esas reuniones donde ustedes estaban pidiendo el voto. Inclusive, hablé con ustedes individualmente. Y recuerdo que ese día estaban con un énfasis hablando de que iban a hacer algo por los hombres, que no era, que no era justo, y que bueno, a mí en persona, cara a cara. Yo vivo en un lugar de riesgo, miro muchos, muchas personas. Algunas no son verdaderamente hombres, son personas que tienen adicciones. Algunas las miro en sus adicciones, y otras verdaderamente durmiendo en el bote de la basura. Está bien, hay que tener orden, hay que tener la ciudad bien. Pero quiero saber, ya que pusieron esta ordenanza, que está bien, entre comillas, ¿a dónde van a ir los hombres a vivir? ¿A dónde los van a llevar? Quiero esa respuesta, aunque ya sé que ustedes ya prepararon todo, que ya está aprobado, que ya no hay nada que hacer. Quiero que alguien de ustedes, de las señoritas que están aquí en el podio ahorita, aquí sentadas, con las que hablé en persona, y me dijeron que iban a hacer algo por ellos. Quiero que la que sea me diga ahorita en qué está trabajando acerca de esto. Por favor, sobre todo la mayor, también le pido respeto, porque estoy mirando que cada vez que se descuida así como los niños que lo están comiendo en la mesa, están en el celular. Y nosotros le decimos al niño, ey, y aquí señora, usted está representándonos, y yo quiero que me respete cuando estoy hablando. Por favor, ponga atención, y su actitud no es buena. Cuando hablé con usted, era una persona muy sencilla, muy accesible. Con otra cara, la verdad, no la conozco. No la reconozco, en serio. Por favor, quiero que usted me conteste qué va a hacer con los hombres, qué va a pasar con ellos. Quiero una respuesta, por favor. Alguien, usted me puede decir, usted? Alguien? No saben ya? Está muy mal, la mera verdad. Me arrepiento de haber puesto mi voto en ustedes.
Thank you, ma'am. Raúl Ureña? Do you have any more public comment?
No se espanten. Mi nombre es Raúl Ureña. Soy una ciudadana transgénero aquí de la ciudad de Caléxico. Vivo en la 80, eh, River, Caléxico, California. Así como le dijo la ciudadana Roset. Aquí está otra vez la querida Noricumbo en su texteo caliente. No sé qué está pasando por ella, está turbia. Pero aquí estamos legislando el futuro de las personas que han tenido la desgracia, que le han pasado cosas en su vida, y que ahora viven en la calle. Por la ordenanza escrita, esto va a afectar, no nomás a los hombres, a las madres de familia que viven en sus carros, con sus hijos, y que van al Caléxico Unified School District, como la recolor de acá afuera que dijo, uff, esas llaves. Va a afectar a la gente que pisca a las 2:00 de la mañana para darles de tragar, con todo respeto. Los va a afectar, porque es entre las horas de sunset a sunrise. Es camping poner el cartoncito bajo las definiciones establecidas en su propuesta. Y las penalidades, con todo respeto a mi querido amigo Orozco, sí llaman encarcelamiento a la segunda ofensa, hasta encarcelamiento tres meses. No nomás porque tenemos un jefe buena gente, no se va a hacer. ¿Por qué? Porque tenemos un liderazgo, así como él es buena gente, un liderazgo, pues zafado, podrido, corrupto en moralidad, y echándose esta en tiempo de ceniza que murió Jesucristo por nuestros pecados. Faltándole el respeto, como un día se me acusó a mí que no ponía atención. Respondanle a la señora, no a mí, a la señora que vino con su bastoncito que votó por ustedes. Yo no voté por ustedes, pero ella sí. Respondanle cómo esto va a solucionar el problema cíclico sistémico de la pobreza que va a haber más con los aranceles, con la inflación, con los estados económicos, y con un presupuesto de cero, cómo van a tener los recursos para enforzar esta póliza. En su escrito dice que no va a haber impacto fiscal, entonces, ¿qué, se van a restar solos? Que la directora de finanza no calculó un particular impacto sobre las horas, a lo mejor que toman para llevarlos al centro, para dar la citación. ¿Cuándo alguien más espera dos horas para servicios? Respondan. No enseñaron el presupuesto en gráfica como se ha hecho en los últimos 20 años, porque la gráfica se miraría para arriba y para abajo, y cero. Cero es lo que hay, 2024, 2025. Entonces, Cabildo, querido hermoso, querida alcaldesa, respóndale no a mí. Respóndale al pueblo de Caléxico. ¡Que viva! Todos, todas, todas, con hogar. Todos, todas, todas, con hogar y sin hogar en esta ciudad. Que todos somos cuerpos de Cristo y amados por Dios Santito Santo. ¡Que viva, y ciudadanos, que viva!
Okay, thank you. You have more, any more public comment? Can you repeat the name once more?
Yesenia Iguera.
Buenas noches a todos. Isabel Ureña, 805 Rivera. ¿No se escucha? Perdón. Pensé que ya no. Iba a haber alguna oportunidad de pararme aquí. Había jurado nunca más volver a pararme aquí, pero esto que están haciendo es una total injusticia. Es algo inhumano, por todas las razones que ya se han dicho. Por, como dijo el joven Ureña, la economía va para abajo. Así es que, aparte de toda esta gente vulnerable que está afuera, va a haber más. ¿Dónde los van a meter? A todos a la cárcel, porque no tienen un hogar. Ellos no escogieron, no todos escogieron estar ahí. Yo he tenido el privilegio, el honor, la bendición, de poder proveer alimentos a estas personas una vez al mes, de corazón. Ustedes, todos ustedes los que están aquí sentados del Cabildo, ninguno se ha tomado el tiempo como personas que nos representan, de ver qué necesidades tienen. Ustedes han escuchado sus historias, de por qué están en donde están. Créanme que se sorprenderían, y solamente se sorprenderían, porque no creo que les remuerda nada en su corazón, como dicen. Algunas de ustedes se pasan los domingos en la iglesia, incados, pidiendo a Dios, rezando, pero en su corazón, la mayoría de ustedes, a los que conozco y los que sé, son personas que no se les remuerda el corazón. Y ahorita lo veo en las caras de la señora Noricumbo, y la señora aquí Perrone, porque para mí es una persona, no es Thailanda, es Perrone. En su sangre corre la sangre Perrone, riéndose y burlándose, y burlándose de mi hijo, que viene con todos los hechos, porque estuvo sentado ahí donde ustedes. Y a él sí le creo. A él sí le creo. Qué pena, qué pena que estén en los asientos y no hagan. Espero que puedan no votar a favor de esta, de esta, no sé si es ley o lo que sea, pero... Sí, ya lo van a votar que sí. No importan las palabras, pero por lo menos que no queden, que no hablamos, y no nos hicimos escuchar nuestra opinión y nuestra voz. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. One more.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, and Community Members. My name is Ricardo Ortega. I live at 429 Sherman Street, Caléxico. And I'm here today to oppose the proposed ordinance that would impose fines on individuals experiencing homelessness from camping on sidewalks using public or private property. While I understand the concerns about public spaces and safety, this ordinance is not the right solution. It is ineffective, costly, and frankly inhumane. The ordinance does not nothing to address the root causes of homelessness, such as a lack of affordable housing, unemployment, and mental health challenges. Instead, it punishes people for being poor. The reality is that most homeless individuals cannot afford fines, which means they would end up with warrants, criminal records, and even potential jail time, all of which makes it harder for them to escape their situation of where they're at. Enforcing fines and sanctions requires law enforcement and court involvement, all of which costs money. Instead of wasting funds punishing people who cannot pay, I really recommend that we invest in real solutions. If the goal is to reduce the visible homelessness, we must approach this in a compassionate way. The council should consider forming a working group, making up of organizations here in Caléxico and Imperial County, and residents, who can meet and find a better solution that will benefit everybody. There is a way, but I really would recommend that there be a working, a working group that's gonna get down and come back with some type of solution that is beneficial for everyone. If this ordinance is passed, we will not see a decrease in homelessness, only an increase in suffering. Punishing people for being poor is not good leadership. True leadership is finding solutions to help people and get off the streets permanently. I urge the council to reject this ordinance and focus on real long-term solutions that are more effective and compassionate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, and Community Members. I'm here today to oppose any ordinance that criminalizes homelessness in Caléxico. Such an approach does not solve the crisis, it only deepens the suffering of the most vulnerable, increases cost for taxpayers, and puts the city in direct conflict with the Imperial County's own strategic plan to end homelessness. The Imperial County Homeless Strategic Plan explicitly states that the county's goal is to move people who are experiencing homelessness into permanent housing as quickly as possible. This is in the Imperial County Homeless Strategic Plan Strategy 3. Rather than punishing individuals for being unhoused, the county has already outlined proven cost-effective solutions that we should be adopting here in Caléxico. Housing-first approach, the county supports rapidly moving individuals into permanent housing without preconditions. Criminalization will only push people further away from stability. Supportive housing and case management. Instead of filling our jails, we should be providing mental health and social services that help individuals transition into stable housing. Emergency shelter innovations, low-bearer shelters, modular housing, and expanded transitional housing options offer better alternatives than criminalization. Landlord engagement and housing assistance. The county plan already includes strategies to expand rental assistance and incentives for landlords to house individuals in need, which is a long-term, fiscally responsible solution. According to the county's own data, it is significantly cheaper to house individuals than to cycle them through jail, emergency rooms, and law enforcement encounters. This council recently returned two million dollars in federal aid that could have been used to support unhoused residents and asylum seekers. Instead of embracing a policy of compassion and common sense, this body is not considering criminalization, an approach that directly contradicts the strategic goals of Imperial County itself. I remember that one meeting we had Ricardo Ortega here, doing a presentation with the Methodist Church. They had their plan, they presented it to the council. I know that none of you were here. Gilberto Manzanares and Raúl Ureña had just been recalled, so it was a two-three, uh, two-one vote to return that money, just facts right here. So, just to end, I urge you to remove any ordinance criminalizing homelessness from the agenda, instead in line with the county's already established strategy. The county recognizes that housing. If the county recognizes that housing and not handcuffs is the solution, why is Caléxico moving in the opposite direction? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Kathy Lara. I am a resident from Caléxico, and I just want to start off by saying that we have way more important things to be focusing on, instead of criminalizing our houseless people. Your person came on here to discuss how the Supreme Court approved this decision without mentioning the counterargument, saying that this was an inhumane stance, saying that it wouldn't solve anything, saying that this wouldn't work, that this was criminal, that this was inhumane. But the Supreme Court, which was, which the judges were put in by Donald Trump, who released this supposed policy, and now y'all just want to go around with it? Pretend that it works for everyone? Just apply it wherever it goes? You called houseless people nuances. They're people, people, with emotions, with lives, with feelings, with everything, and y'all are treating them as if they were a term, as if they were a public nuisance. Just because you don't want to see them doesn't mean that they don't exist. Just because you guys want to invisibilize them doesn't mean that they will stop existing. And we have way more important things to worry about, just as everyone mentioned. No one can afford their groceries, no one can afford their rent. Oh, you guys haven't increased the minimum wage? How do you expect people to live in houses? How do you expect people to pay their grocery prices? And then they mentioned the tariffs. The grocery prices are gonna go up, gasoline is gonna go up, water is gonna go up. Where is the money gonna come from? I'll tell you where the money is gonna come from. As soon as a person is incarcerated, they're exploited for their labor. Is that where y'all are gonna get your revenue from? From exploiting houseless people? Where are they gonna get a hundred dollars? They're houseless. Where are they gonna get five hundred dollars? Then you're gonna put them in jail for three months? How is that compassionate? And then when they can't pay those five hundred dollars, how the hell are they gonna leave jail? And then when they can't pay that, oh, you're gonna give them another charge? These people suffer from mental illnesses, from substance abuse. When they're in jail, how are you gonna deal with withdrawal? How are you gonna deal if they feel fear, and then they respond in violence? How are you gonna feel if they attack one of your officers? Are you gonna take them to court and give them another year? And then another five years? And then another year? All so you can exploit them for their labor? And so then you can get money? So then that you can get your income up on their expense? When we should be focusing on how we're gonna help our parks, how we're gonna help our people pay their water, to build affordable housing, to give people jobs, but instead you just don't want to see them?
Thank you, ma'am.
Norma Aguilar.
Norma Aguilar, 839 Hebrew Avenue. "Do not wait for leaders to do it alone, person to person." That's a quote I have in my office from Mother Teresa. Ten years ago, Maribor Padilla called me and asked me to help to see if we could put together a shelter. Despite the, all, everything that was stopping us, we were able to establish that. Thereafter, I'm not gonna give you the whole story, because it's too long, and I've only got three minutes. But what I'm trying to tell you is that as a community, we came together at that time because it was freezing. And I can see people here, in this room, that responded, and on this dais as well. They brought blankets, food. We would stay there overnight, we would... What happened? What happened afterwards? We shut down, and then numerous councils after that. We offered, Maribor and I came to the city of Caléxico, offering to work together, just like Ricardo was talking about. Ricardo, I think, was part of some of the conversations. We had resistance. Instead of criminalizing the situation, why not work together? Okay? There's Senate Bill 91, which we're already doing, converting hotels to housing. It's already in place with the Housing Authority. What about designating or finding another city-owned property? The encampment resolution fund, they just, they put two hundred million allocated, and in fact, I think that was part of the money that, the millions that were sent down here, and by the way, that was rerouted to San Diego, which I just found out, San Diego added another four hundred beds, because they've got encampments, little tents for the homeless, because they're trying to address the cause of the problem. Because you can look it up, I'm not gonna go ahead and tell you, repeat what somebody already said. It costs more to incarcerate than it does to rehabilitate, okay? But you can't do it together, we can't do it together, but together we can. AB 785, exemptions for affordable housing projects, that's through California Legislative Office. SB 7 mandates that each city and county provide housing opportunities for homeless individuals within their jurisdiction based on the highest point in time count. Please, people.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla.
Good evening, Council Members. My name is Gael García. I'm here to speak against Article 9, because criminalizing homelessness is not a solution. It's a costly cycle that does nothing to address the root cause of it all. Finishing the unhoused magically, finding the unhoused magically make them come up with five hundred, taking them to jail for three months while setting the ghetto home when they get out. Without shelters, resources, or programs, they'll end up right back where they started. This isn't solving the issue, it's just pushing it out of sight. Not only is this unconstitutional, but it's also a waste of taxpayer money. As everybody mentioned, the cost of police labor, fines, and incarceration will add up to more than what it would take to invest in real solutions, like shelter support, programs, and job assistance, among many other things. If someone experiencing homelessness tries to get back on their feet, a criminal record will follow them along the way. It'll only make it harder for them. This could block them from getting jobs, housing, and even social services if you guys ever do make that available. The reality is homelessness isn't a crime, it's a crisis. A crisis requires solutions, not punishments like you're doing. Why is it that the unhoused receive more help from nonprofits and community organizations than they do from the seat of Caléxico? Why is it that the city constantly relying on nonprofits to take care of major issues in our area, instead of taking responsibility themselves? It's nonprofits out there that are feeding people, handing out blankets, doing outreach. Where's the city? It shouldn't be up to volunteers to pick up the slack for what our government refuses to do. I know this because I've been a part of the work through Valleveria, I've helped distribute food supplies. I've seen firsthand how much community members are willing to step up when our city won't. But nonprofits shouldn't have to be the only safety net. The city should be doing its part, not passing laws that make life even harder for the most vulnerable. Think about what we're really doing here, spending thousands of taxpayer money to throw people in jail for not having a home. And when they're released, we send them right back to the streets with even fewer options than before. The seat of Caléxico has no real plan to address homelessness, but somehow it has a plan to punish the unhoused for existing. If this passes, people will simply be forced to the next city, likely El Centro, continuing the cycle instead of ending it. But let's be clear here, this isn't just an issue for the unhoused, it affects all of us. Criminalizing homelessness doesn't make the problem appear, it just moves it around. This approach makes our streets less safe, drains city resources, and ignores the fact that many of these individuals are veterans disabled or victims of circumstances beyond their control. And let's not forget it, the city council went to church, came back, proposed jailing the homeless on Ash Wednesday. We can do better than this. Other cities have found real solutions. They built shelters, invested in transitional housing, provided outreach programs that actually helped people get back on their feet. Why can't we? Caléxico needs real solutions, not criminalization. It's time to do it better. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Giovani Neri. I live in Ham...
I live in Hamms, Ahem, Callexico. I've been feeding the homeless for over a decade. Today, I'm here to address the proposed ordinance regulating camping on public and private property. This ordinance will only affect the most vulnerable members of our community and worsen their living situations. Let's be real, the only people, let's be real, this is Yosemite. The only people camping here are homeless population. Many of you have opinions on whether to support or oppose this measure, but I want everyone to understand what it really means. Under this ordinance, a homeless person simply sleeping in a public place could receive a one hundred dollar fine. How do you expect them to pay, pay that when they have no income or resources? And if they do it again, they could face even higher fines of five hundred dollars or even end up in jail for three months. Let me tell you about a person I met during one of my feeds. This person wasn't always on the streets. He lost his home after a work accident. And without family support, he ended up sleeping in parks. Despite this, he tried to get back on his feet with odd jobs. But if this ordinance passes, people like him won't just lose what little they have. They'll be punished for being poor. And if homelessness itself were a crime. So I ask you, how is someone supposed to move forward if the first thing we do is push them down further? Instead of finding and confiscating their belongings, which only pushes them deeper into poverty, the city should focus on effective solutions. More shelters with sufficient space, mental health and rehabilitation services, and affordable housing programs. Other cities have tried different approaches, so have, some have invested in assistance centers where the homeless can sleep, shower, and get help finding jobs. That truly addresses the issue. I understand concerns about safety and cleanliness in public spaces. But the solution isn't to erase these people from the map. They are part of our community. What we do, what we do today will speak volumes about what kind of city we want to be. I urge the council to reconsider this ordinance and seek humane and effective solutions, not just ways to push the problem out of sight. It's not about ignoring the issue, but solving it the right way. Also, I would like to inform you that I was doing some research, and according to 2019 Martin versus City of Boys, there was a decision made by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which ruled that punishing homeless individuals for sleeping in public when no alternative shelter is available violates the Eighth Amendment prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment. Thank you.
Daniela Flores?
Good evening. My name is Daniela Flores, and I speak on behalf of Imperial Valley Equity and Justice. In strong opposition to Item 9, the ordinance that seeks to regulate camping on public or private property. Homelessness in Imperial County is growing at a heartbreaking rate. In 2024, 1,500 individuals were counted as homeless, up from 1,323 and 1,062. This is an alarming increase of nearly forty-three percent from twenty-two. Forty, four hundred and fifty-one more individuals who now face uncertainty and hardship. These numbers gathered from the county's point in time count reflect lives in crisis. But what is often overlooked is the specific impact that will, that this will have on our farmworkers. For, for a long history in Callexico, this place has been a vital gateway for farmworkers, both migrant and resident farmworkers, who work in our fields cultivating the vegetables that sustain us. These workers are the backbone of our agriculture industry, yet they often go unseen and under, unappreciated. Every day, they face grueling hours in harsh conditions, often working for little pay. Many of them rely on the infrastructure of downtown Callexico to wait for transportation to their jobs, sometimes sleeping in their cars or on the streets before they are picked up. This ordinance threatens to criminalize these workers, fining or even jailing them simply for waiting to earn a living. These workers who kept our country fed during a global pandemic will now face further hardship for doing nothing more than waiting in a place they have no other choice but to rest. This is not just a policy issue, it is a matter of humanity. Migrant farmworkers already face some of the most extreme stress levels in our community, with studies showing that forty percent of farmworkers in Imperial County suffer from significant stress and depression. One of the leading causes of this mental health crisis is a lack of sleep. Sleep that many of these workers sacrifice while waiting for their rights, often after hours of unpaid commute time. The ordinance would add another layer of cruelty to their already difficult lives. It is heartbreaking to think that rather than providing solutions or support, that our city, the gateway of farmworkers, Cesar Chavez standing in, in this community, could fall in the footsteps of past councils that chose to build gates to keep people out in our downtown instead of opening bathrooms to provide basic dignity for those in need. These workers are not criminals. They are not problems to be swept away. They are our neighbors, our family, and our community heroes. We must stand with them and not against them. Our organization urges you with all the compassion and empathy that you can find to reject this ordinance. Let's not make life harder for the people who feed us and care for us. Let's show that our community values humanity and not punishment.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alondra Avitia Ramos, and I am a resident of Callexico. I am here today to express my concern regarding the proposed ordinance. The current situation in our city is unacceptable, and we must prioritize solutions rather than prioritize the dignity and well... We must prioritize solutions that prioritize the dignity and well-being of our most vulnerable community members. I believe the true issue is not being addressed, and there is a serious problem all across the United States in regards to lack of affordable housing. And the proposed ordinance is not going to help the situation in our city, but rather hinder it. Due to their unfortunate circumstances, you are going to make unhoused people criminals and give them fines that you know they have no money to pay, which can lead up to their arrest and eventually can lead to jail time. You are giving fines to people who cannot afford to pay rent, cannot afford to eat. How are they expected to pay these fines? I understand people who have committed crimes must face consequences, but unhoused people are not criminals. They are people who need resources, mental health resources, employment support, education support, resources that can help them fight food insecurity and homelessness. The unhoused community already faces enough hardships such as the lack of stable housing, physical, emotional, and psychological hardships, lack of basic necessities, sleep deprivation, isolation, social and economic barriers. I do not think as a community we should be aiming to add fear onto this, onto this list. I urge the council to carefully consider revising this proposed ordinance and prioritize investing in affordable housing options, making mental health resources accessible and creating safe spaces for unhoused individuals to access basic necessities. If you turn around, it says that we are a unique border community, which means that you should not be following what other cities are doing to fight homelessness. You should be looking for unique solutions.
We need a motion to go past nine thirty.
I'm sorry, what?
We need a motion to go past nine thirty.
Okay. Motion to continue. Tell a second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Next speaker is Marta Cota.
Actually, my full name is Marta Letizia Aldana Cota, famous, infamous. I had, I guess everybody read my mind because most of the people that spoke before me said pretty much what I had written down. But I'm gonna play a scenario for you guys, and I'm gonna go through past issues that came up. If I, if you guys may recall, months ago, maybe last year or so, we had a group of people that came here requesting that the council, the sitting council at that time, remove supplemental taxes from the properties. And these, I mean, if we're gonna compare apples and oranges, homeless are poor, and those that wanted their supplemental taxes removed are rich. Okay? But they came here and they said, I want that, I don't want to pay that anymore, despite the fact that they bought their homes knowing that they had to pay that. So the city is minus X amount of dollars because of that, because the council approved it. The other one is that we had a business community come in here and request, you know what? We don't have anybody coming into our businesses because we're charging them for the parking. Let's stop it. Guess what? Wham! We removed it. So we're a hundred and some thousand, I mean, yeah, dollars, a hundred thousand something dollars. Negative. So my question to you guys is, if we have a homeless person come in here, who is a human being, who deserves respect, ask you guys, please do not put me in jail because I don't have the hundred dollars to pay you. I don't have a home. Somebody, Gio, that was awesome, gave an example. Not everyone that's homeless is a criminal. Come on! It could be your brother, it could be your sister, it could be your uncle, it could be a family member. We need to find solutions. We need to work with Mr. Ortega, all the nonprofit organizations to find solutions to the problem. Not just try to pass the buck. I mean, we're gonna scare them off from Callexico? No, no, we're not. And yes, they are correct. How are we gonna, if they don't have a dime to feed themselves, how are they gonna pay the one hundred dollars? How are they gonna pay the five hundred? As a matter of fact, they're gonna like the fact that you guys are proposing to give them three months free living or house or roof under their heads. Not under their heads, on top of their heads. But you know what I mean. We need to find solutions. And another thing, lastly, you know what, guys? You all were elected by this community, regardless of who you are, what you have, and what you don't have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please, erase those faces.
Kyongi Riva? Perfect. Hello, my name is Celeste Cuny Aguilar, and first off, I just want to start by asking a simple question, which is, what would this look like if this were passed? And then also, what would this look like in a year? If we're going to use language that surrounds encampment and not actually what it is, I would like to see some transparency in terms of the police force that would be used in that moment, but also the active policing that would happen afterwards. Because if you are going to remove them from these premises, then you're going to want them to stay out. So what does that look like? I also wondered what it would be like to have to go through this scenario. And I had accessibility to electronics, I already had food in my system and water, and I was on a break at my job, something that these people may not have. The Arribo de Lupe Men's Center has been closed. I called, closed. 2011, the earthquake that happened completely ruined half of it. It's mainly able to hold about fifty people, but cut that in half. Now the other half, gone. So we can look at the Callexico Housing Authority, called there too. There isn't any applications available at the moment. So after that, you would think, okay, where could I go? El Centro Day Center, that's ten miles away. So public transportation might be an option, but what about all the things that they have? They can't take that on the bus, all that they have, not what they store in their home that they can come back to after working and making some money, everything that they have. I wonder, what else would I do? And then on top of the fines that we just mentioned, I don't have a hundred dollars. I would also like to wonder, this idea of polluting our community and creating danger, polluting with the belongings that they have, that we see trash everywhere that's not left by the houseless community. We see people asking for a dollar. Have you ever been attacked by a person who's experiencing homelessness when you say, no, I can't, I'm sorry? And you get in your car. And there may have been some instances, of course, I saw some looks. I don't know everyone's experience on a day-to-day, but I haven't. And when I ask if they need anything, they're very polite. So why are we going to make these people's lives much more difficult? I looked up the Imperial County COC, IVCCC, region website, and apparently each city and county has a level planning department, and they're able to go ahead and conduct in the ways that they'd like to. And each month, there's a meeting for both executive and general membership meetings. And I think it'd be really neat to understand what goes on during those meetings, to have transparency. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, actually pronounced she/her, thank you very much, and full name, Celeste Cuny Aguilar. Thank you.
Joanna Espinoza?
Good afternoon. My name is Joanna Espinoza. I'm a resident of Callexico. I would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Nine regarding the new municipal code regulating the camping on public spaces. So to my understanding, the solution that y'all are offering is to fine people a hundred dollars for sleeping on the street. And on their second offense, they're gonna be either fined five hundred dollars or be imprisoned. And again, it's been said over and over again, how are they gonna afford a hundred dollar fine if they can't afford rent? How are they gonna afford five hundred dollars? And then on top of that, like, the stressors and just the experience of being arrested, incarcerated, and all that, I don't see a solution to this. I don't see this as a permanent solution. So why can't we invest in a permanent shelter in Callexico? Why can't we invest in high-quality mental health services for the unsheltered population? So on Section One of the ordinance, you raised four main impacts, and I like to offer some alternatives that are actually long-term solutions. So in Impact Number One, it's the human waste. I propose locating funding or relocating funding, like y'all are experts at doing, to reopen public restrooms, maybe just two, at the Rockwood Plaza Park, at the World of Friendship Park. And I know that it's gonna cost maintenance and maybe security to keep them, but the salary of the officers who will do the arrests and the admin who will do the paperwork and the cost of processing these people into the county jail is also gonna cost money. But more important than that, it's gonna cost resources and time. And we've already heard from past comments that they, police officers take a long time to respond to emergency calls sometimes, and this is just gonna add more to their plate. So again, creating a bigger problem instead of adding to the solution. Now on Impact Number Two, which was the obstruction of free passage and preventing structures to be used as they should. I've witnessed the disabled pedestrian on their electric wheelchair tipping over because of the broken and cracked pavement and the ramps that are supposed to make it easier for people on wheels to, to go into the sidewalk, actually was a hazard. There's high school and college students, pregnant women, elderly people who walk through downtown to go to work, to go to church, to go get groceries in downtown. And these sidewalks and these roads that are lacking maintenance are the real hazard, not the people that are living on the streets. So I propose investing in more benches around downtown to ensure that people, the public facilities get used as they should, and repairing... And repairing these uneven roads and pavements in all of downtown to ensure that there isn't any obstruction of passage. So please, again, my ask is to invest in more long-term solutions, like the rehabilitation programs that have been talked about, and on a twenty-four-hour, all-year-round shelter in Callexico. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Irene Romero. Hola, buenas tardes, me llamo Irene Romero, resident of Callexico. Good evening, council members. I urge you to vote against this ordinance, because criminalizing homelessness is not only inhumane and ineffective, it directly violates constitutional and human rights while exacerbating the problem it claims to solve. This ordinance seeks to fine and jail individuals for the crime of existing without a home. Punishing people for sleeping in public when they have no alternative is unconstitutional. Under the Eighth Amendment, sorry, which prohibits excessive fines and cruel and unusual punishment. If the city enforces this law without sufficient shelter space, it risks violating the human... violating the rights given to these human beings residing in the city of Callexico. Research and real-world evidence show that criminalizing homelessness does not reduce it. It only pushes people further into poverty and desperation. Jail time disrupts access to jobs, benefits, and medical care, making it even harder for individuals to find stability. Once released, they are back on the streets, only now with a criminal record that makes housing and employment even more difficult to obtain. If public safety is truly the priority, then we must invest in real solutions rather than punishment. Proven alternatives include designated safe camping areas with sanitation outreach services and pathways to housing. Housing First programs, which provide permanent housing or rehousing and support services to the unhoused, which have reduced chronic homelessness in cities nationwide by prioritizing stable housing alongside mental health and employment support. Investments in affordable housing by providing clear and concise information on financing and grant programs to help subsidize the cost of acquiring or building affordable housing. Because without safe and accessible places to live, homelessness will only continue. Poverty is not a crime, and homelessness cannot be solved by force. This ordinance does not make Callexico safer. It simply hides the problem at the cost of human dignity and taxpayers' money. The city has a choice. Lead with compassion and effective policies or become the first in Imperial Valley to be remembered for criminalizing poverty. I urge you to reject this ordinance and work towards real solutions. Thank you.
Ismael Orvisu.
Buenas noches, everyone. Don't criminalize poverty. Si decidimos criminalizar la pobreza, los que tienen feria, se van a salir más con la suya. Many people in Callexico are one tragedy away from homelessness. There are homeless families in our community. Homelessness doesn't always mean people visibly homeless on the streets. It's when they lack access to their own space to call home. Los que tienen que ir a vivir con los tíos, abuelos, o amigos, en muchos casos. To qualify as a homeless student, under the McKinley-Vento Act, a child or youth must lack a fixed, regular, inadequate nighttime residence, which includes situations like living in shelters, cars, motels, parks, abandoned buildings, or sharing housing with others due to economic hardship or loss of housing. We all know households that have too many people living in them due to the lack of affordable housing. Like, that's just culture in Callexico. The prison industrial complex is a term used to describe the relationship between the government and business that profit through mass incarceration. Contrary to popular belief, slavery was not abolished by the Thirteenth Amendment. Hundreds of thousands of people are still living in involuntary servitude due to an extension clause that allows free labor for punishment of a crime. Last year, over sixty-five of incarcerated people reported being forced to work in prison, doing vital jobs like firefighting and paving roads, while government and private companies generated and saved collectively at least one billion dollars each year from their labor. In 2022, incarcerated workers made up forty-three percent of state firefighters. And even after some released from prison, they were not allowed to serve as firefighters. An average, in California, prison inmates earn between sixteen cents and seventy-four cents per hour. Fences on the alleys won't stop people from being... having the need to go. Restrooms will. ARPA had restrooms. It had a homeless encampment plan, too. Muchos de los homeless son fileros y chambreadores, finally. Public defecation is the last choice any human would naturally take if they're not given any public restrooms. I've been here for four years, five years now, looking for a restroom out in downtown Callexico. Nowhere to be seen, dude. I feel crazy, because I told people, people come from all over the world to Callexico Mexicali, y le digo, "¿Sabes qué? We don't have downtown restrooms." "¿Cómo que no tienes baño?" Like, you can go down the street in Mexicali, five pesos, baño gratis. Casi casi. Pero porque no queremos ayudar a la gente de la comunidad, our unique border community. We have elitists on our council now, again. The two people that got recalled were the people looking for a rehabilitation of downtown. There's so much that was planned. You guys destroyed it. People worked for it. It's crazy that we're fighting for the people that have nothing. You guys are looking for people that have literally nothing. And these people grind day and night in our fields, in our backyards. La gente dice, "Vamos por unos homeless para agarrar chamba barata."
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Gilberto Manzanares, ocho y seis, calle sexta. Pues tenía un discurso preparado, pero la verdad es que... pues aquí la comunidad me ha inspirado a contarles un... les diría un cuento, pero no os cuento, la verdad es que... hay un conocido mío que de hecho, pues por no decir dónde trabaja, pero trabaja para seguridad pública, law enforcement. Y hizo todo bien en su vida. Fue directito de la high school, se fue a la academia, se casó, tuvo hijas, compró casa, todo bien. Pero un día fue al doctor porque no se sentía bien. Y el diagnóstico fue cáncer. El siguiente paso, porque su seguridad no era suficientemente buena, aunque trabajaba para pues una buena agencia, se supone. El segundo paso era vender la casa, porque no podían pagar el tratamiento para cáncer. Así de cerquita estamos muchos de perderlo todo. Así de cerquitas. No hizo nada mal. Fue pura mala suerte. Un law enforcement. Así como esa persona casi casi queda en la calle, porque lo bueno que el cáncer regresó y regresó y pues no tuvieron que tomar esas medidas, pero así de cerquita estuvo, perdiendo todo. Así cuantos no hay en la ciudad? Trabajadores de aquí de la ciudad. Porque yo estuve ahí y yo sé lo que les pagan a los de Public Works. El sesenta y cuatro por ciento de los americanos ahorita, hoy en día, viven de cheque a cheque. Y como yo estuve ahí, yo sé que ese es el caso con los de Public Works, porque les pagamos menos lo que le paga el McDonald's. Entonces, ¿a cuantos de la ciudad, si les pasa una tragedia, van a mandar a la cárcel por no tener una alternativa? ¿A cuantos veteranos, señor Noricomo, piensan meter a la cárcel? Como usted, que también es veterano, porque salió de la guerra? Pues mal de la cabeza, con muchos problemas mentales. ¿A cuántas personas? Esas personas no se meten con ustedes, ¿y por qué se están metiendo con ellos? El centro que está teniendo una explosión económica, los miran que los están acarreando, ¿no? Ni siquiera el centro. ¿Acaso ya tiraron la toalla por las soluciones? Porque yo puedo pensar en al menos un otro grupo gubernamental en la historia que le tiraba todos los problemas de la sociedad y los amontonaba un específico grupo en la sociedad. Y como última solución, como no tenían que hacer con ellos, los pusieron en campamentos. Ya sabrán ustedes cuáles serán esos. Muchas gracias.
Juan Valencia.
Hello, I'm Juan Valencia, I'm a lifelong Callexico resident. Barely made it here, because I was working, but I had to be present to call out this honestly quite horrific precedent that y'all are sitting here with this ordinance. I like to start by saying, I myself am thankfully housed now, but I have experienced houselessness in the past for a couple of months. Thankfully, I've had the luck of having very strong community support and support systems, so I'm here today housed. But I have experienced houselessness, and I invite you all to look at me like I'm human, right? I'm still coherent, like, I still have thoughts and emotions. I didn't turn into some kind of creature, right? But that's essentially what y'all are saying here, is that by issue of simple poverty, of not having had the same luck or the same resources as other people, y'all are now deeming them criminals, stripping them of their humanity. And I don't have any words, because quite clearly, it is almost impossible to appeal to your morality if you're already setting this precedent in the first place. Y'all are not working for a community. Y'all are clearly working for fascist thinking and the prison industrial complex, because those two areas are very profitable right now, aren't they? So all I have to say is, you all are clearly feeling empowered by the broader political climate, right? That's the only reason you would rate something as repulsive as this. So I guess all I wanna say is, there's no hiding from the people who truly know what you're doing, that what you're doing is pure cowardice. You're not going after any broader power systems that cause poverty in the first place. Y'all are not going after any systemic issues that keep Callexico as poor as it is. Y'all are going after the very victims of these systems. Y'all are going after the vulnerable. Y'all are going after the disenfranchised who have nothing, almost nothing to defend themselves with. Y'all are starting by charging them money, you know they don't have any. And I don't, like, I frankly don't even know any of you. I see a lot of, like, new faces here. I haven't done this in a while. But I just wanna say, by proposing this, by approving it, y'all are siding with fascist thinking, and y'all are being cowards. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rebecca Lemon.
Okay. Ready?
How is this inappropriate? So are you.
Ms. Lemon.
What?
Address, address, order.
Shut your mouth, please.
Excuse me.
See? She did it too. There, you lowered yourself to my level.
Okay. Order, please.
Make me.
Ms. Lemon, please, direct the council.
Fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I wasn't even gonna talk, this is disgusting. But you guys, you guys don't know anything. You guys call it, throw the word fascist out there, transphobic, racist. Who cares? Those words don't mean anything. You guys have overused them to the point that they don't mean anything. I'm on what?
Off topic.
Yeah.
Okay, let me...
Did you not say I was fascist?
Um, Ms. Lemon, um, let me just put some order here. So we just sat here quietly, listening to various people.
So make them be quiet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, so we're gonna need you to show the same respect that people showed you. They listened to you. And now, you might not agree, just like others didn't agree with you, but let her speak, please. It is her right, just like it was yours. Thank you, and that's all I'm gonna say.
A lot of people saying that we have to do this for the homeless. We're not showing compassion, we're not showing empathy, we're not looking at them as humans. When you leave people on the streets, struggling in the throes of addiction, that's wrong. You have to get them somewhere helped. A hundred dollars is not a much, that's what cans for a day, I mean, at best. I mean, it's not that difficult, seriously. And if you don't wanna get fined, don't sleep there.
Ms. Lemon, I think it's better if you direct yourself to the council.
There's programs. Neighborhood House, that's one of the programs we have in Callexico that's supposed to do the rapid rehousing. They got 3.15 million dollars in 2024. Two point two in version expenses, one point two was in salaries. So where's the other... I mean, they got 3.15 million. Why didn't they help more people? They have hotel vouchers, they don't give them out. My husband was homeless. He was, he had a mental, he had a mental break. He was homeless. I called every nonprofit, which is just, all these people here looking for free money. That's why they want more homeless to come in, they get paid by the person. That's basically it. You think it's not? I don't even tell, talk about their taxes. But I mean, you can't leave people, you can't throw a bunch of people that are mentally ill, that are homeless, that are addicted alcoholics. You cannot throw them with newly sober people in a motel. You can't. You're just gonna have problems there. People that are, people that have gone through the programs, they've gone through treatment, and they're clean and sober, and they wanna start a new life, need a simple place to start a new life. That's why you go through the programs. And this free, free, what is it, free labor? My husband was in jail. He loved going to work, he loved, he loved it. He would go every day, he would look forward to going to work, and he would work on days when there wasn't work, because he was so bored sitting in jail. He also got clean, I mean, he wasn't on drugs, he had a mental break, but he ended up getting his stuff together. He got out and he thrived. I mean, it's not that, it's not, a hundred dollars isn't the worst. It's not a thousand dollars like other cities. Just leave, just leave, don't say this. I mean, seriously, there's programs out there. Look at Brown Back Coalition, how much money they got. Where's their shower van? They're supposed to have a shower van traveling around. I haven't seen anything in years. I don't even think it's moved in years. I see it, drive by it. I mean, she got how much money for a shower van she doesn't use? That was supposed to help the homeless take showers. That would keep them clean for work.
Okay, thank you.
I received a following message via email. It says...
I'm sorry, okay.
Dear Callexico City Council members, I, Vanessa Kelp, strongly oppose the passing of Agenda Item Number Nine, which proposes fines and potential imprisonment for individuals sleeping slash camping on public or private property. This policy is not only misguided, but actively harmful, punishing the most vulnerable members of our community instead of addressing the root cause of homelessness. Criminalizing homelessness does not solve the issue, it exacerbates it. Issuing fines to individuals who are already struggling financially only pushes them further into instability and debt. The idea that a second offense could lead to imprisonment is even more disturbing. A criminal record will make it significantly harder for unhoused individuals to secure employment, stable housing, or access essential services, trapping them in a cycle of poverty. Instead of punitive measures, the city of Callexico should be investing in real solutions, expanding access to shelters, mental health services, job placement programs, and affordable housing. Other cities that have taken this punitive approach have only seen the problem worsen, as criminalization does nothing to reduce homelessness and instead drains public resources on unnecessary policing and incarceration. This ordinance does not make Callexico safer or stronger, it makes it cooler. I urge the council to reject this inhumane and ineffective proposal as a member of this community. I would like to see the city council work towards policies that address homelessness with compassion, dignity, and real solutions. Vanessa Kelp. I also received the same email opposing this item from Ivana Woodward, Caroline Calderón, Victoria Lara, Stephanie Rodriguez, Raquel Lara, Joanna Landeros, Sylvia Peterson, Giselle Regla, Christina Gutierrez, Winter García, Carlos Carlon, Randy Galván, Diana Godoy, Ginger Veliz, Abigail Domínguez, Daringca Domínguez, Iliana González, Ashley Gutierrez, Charlotte Mascareño.
Next speaker is Dylan Castillo.
Good afternoon, City Council members.
Good afternoon, city councils, city manager, staff. My name is Dylan Castillo and I'm a resident of Callexico. It's been a while since I've been up here. Really nervous and really frustrated with just with what I'm hearing, but so beautiful to see my community come together to kind of let you all know what it is that our community needs and how we feel. I've been out of lots of words at here, but I feel like everything that has been said has been, has been said and I'm worried that anything more is gonna fall on deaf ears, but I'll go with one more. So I'm here to read a statement. So on behalf of Fernanda Vega, resident of Imperial County, in opposition of Item Nine, the ordinance regulating camping on public or private property, this policy unfairly punishes people for being unhoused instead of addressing why so many in our community are struggling. We know that there have been an increase of people who are unhoused, but instead of looking into real solutions like affordable housing and job support services, this ordinance would fine or jail people just for trying to survive. Many of those affected are families, seniors, and people with disabilities who have been struggling to keep a roof over their heads. Imperial County is already struggling with a major lack of shelter beds with rent cost rises. More people are finding themselves without options. So where are they supposed to go? Criminalizing doesn't fix the problem. It just further punishes them into a crisis. So this ordinance would also increase unnecessary interactions with law enforcement, making it harder for the people to get jobs and housing in the future. Punishing these folks for sleeping outside when there aren't enough shelter options is cruel. The city should be looking into long-term solutions to this problem. If we truly care about making our community safer and healthier, we need to invest in the things that actually help, like housing programs, more shelters, and resources that provide job support services. So we urge the council to reject this harmful ordinance and focus on the real solutions that address the root causes of homelessness. Please vote no on Item Nine. Thank you so much.
One more comment submitted via email. Says, dear council members, my name is Jonathan Ramsey and I simply wanted to express my support for the passing of Agenda Item Number Nine, which states, introduce an ordinance regulating camping on public or private property. If I understand it correctly, the judgment made by the U.S. Supreme Court on Grant's Pass Oregon versus Johnson allows states and subsequently cities to criminalize homelessness. My only question is, what took you so long? It's about time we took back our public places and removed these burdens of society from our once beautiful parks and empty plots of land. There's nothing more annoying than seeing the reminder that despite living in the richest nation in the world, we have people who have no money. They need to keep their moneylessness to themselves and out of public view. Nobody wants to see our failures and their suffering on display. I say making, being homeless illegal and jail them all. So what if they maybe grew up in the foster care system and dumped on the streets at eighteen? Or they're a veteran who lost their job due to a disability? Or they're victims of domestic violence with nowhere else to go? Or lost everything due to medical debt? Or they're suffering from substance abuse, addiction, or a combination thereof? Think about it. They could be rounded up and sent to jail to be used as cheap labor. To produce products at a high profit margin, we can transform the issue of homelessness from an unsightly eyesore into a profit-making slave labor machine. It's genius plan, wouldn't you say? Let's forget about attempting to solve the underlying issues that lead to homelessness. Their lives aren't important anyway. Lastly, if we criminalize homelessness, we will further engrain in our citizenry a fear of losing their jobs, which will help create an obedient workforce. With a fearful workforce, corporations or businesses can keep wages lower, maybe even abuse their labor, and workers would have no choice but to take it. After all, having fearful obedient workers has always been a staple feature in a wealthy and democratic society. Again, I want to express my support for this ordinance, pass the ordinance, and throw them all in jail. Jonathan Ramsey. We have no more public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's no more public comment and we're gonna bring it back to council. I'm gonna start this time. The reason why I'm gonna start is because behind this ordinance, there's been a lot of conversations with the county primarily. I heard a lot with all these comments, there's some of the things that were very similar in all of your comments was that we need real solutions. This is inhumane. There's no shelters. And this is cruel. Those are the main things that I gathered. Just so you know, before, I believe when all of us were campaigning, one of the main issues was homelessness in Callexico. Within our citizens, our residents, our business owners. I did talk to the, there were some staff members that came from the Salvation Army. We were talking about the point in time count. And they mentioned to me that if you don't count the slabs, Callexico is the city in the valley that has the highest rate of homelessness. So it's clearly an issue that we can no longer ignore. That's what's been happening. It's been ignored and it just keeps increasing. So we said we weren't gonna ignore this. We said that in campaign. We, it's nothing hidden. We said we were gonna approach this and we did approach it. And the way that we approached it is that we contacted the county. We contacted our county supervisor. We had meetings with the Department of Social Services, Behavioral Health. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, ma'am. I'm speaking. I'm sorry. You already spoke. Thank you. Okay. So. I'm sorry. Are you gonna let me speak? Are you gonna let me speak? Okay. I'm gonna give you a warning, ma'am. I don't want to, but you had your time to speak. Okay, so, okay. So you can leave her in if she continues it. Go ahead. Okay, so in speaking to the staff in the Department of Social Services, Behavioral Health, they do, I know they also mentioned, there were some public comment that also mentioned nonprofits. But in actuality, the county has funding and the county has these services and they're not being utilized. One of the things that they asked us in those conversations, because Mayor Protema Legaspi was part of those conversations as well, we asked them, is there shelter? And they said, yes, there is shelter. But they're reluctant. They don't want shelter. Why? Because, you know, sometimes they, they're not ready to get away from their addictions or whatever it is that's going on and they're willing to help. And the idea behind this is, from what we've spoken, is that it's gonna be a collaborative effort with the county, with these specialized people to actually find real solutions. And those solutions are to help them get shelter. Because to me, we all see different, we see things differently. So you see cruel, that maybe a police officer will approach them with staff and say, hey, here's the help. We can get you the help. We can get you treatment. We can get you shelter. We can get you food. We can get you vouchers if you need to go back home. We have the help. But they might say no because they're not ready to change or because whatever situation they're in, they're not in the right mindset. But to me, you might find that to be cruel. To me, cruelty is them living outside in 120 degrees. Or living out there in the cold. Or having nowhere, or, you know, being harassed or attacked by somebody else. Because it's happened. We've all seen it. We've seen videos. We've seen a lot of things going on in our city. So this is going to be a collaborative effort. And there is a help. There is assistance. We are not working alone. We are working with all the resources available in the Imperial County, which there are. So this ordinance is to go out and start with that help because, like I said, they're reluctant to receive it. So there's no other option. You get the help or you get fined. And that's what it is. So like I said, it's an eye of the beholder. You might find it cruel that they get a fine. I find it cruel that they're sleeping on the streets. And that's all I had to say.
Like the mayor said, like the mayor said, we have been working with outside agencies. We've also worked with the Neighborhood House. Every time we've had issues in the past, we've always called you, right Cindy? That we have an unhoused individual that needs food and whatnot. This is the last resort and for, we've had a couple of meetings. Like the chief said, they're not gonna be targeting, you know, unhoused people or people that are camping out at private and public locations, whether or not, you know, welcomed or whatnot. This is the last resort. I mean, we're out there trying to find a solution. We're working with people. I know people are nodding because that's the truth. You know, whether you believe us or not. And we have mentioned this at past council meetings, that we're working with the Sheriff's Department. We're working with mental health and hopefully we'll be working with the Wellness Group. We have different entities. And if you have an agency that you want us to work with, we'll work with. Okay. You got, I got it. Okay, we got it.
I think we already, I really don't wanna have to ask you to leave, but this is a meeting and it needs to be respected. You already spoke. Nobody interrupted you, so please. Okay, go ahead. Okay, you can continue to remove her from the chambers, please.
Okay, look, just to, just to keep the peace, we haven't spoken to housing. I just wanna keep the peace. Yeah, I already, I already answered. Okay? I just wanna keep the peace.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess. Meeting is, we're resuming at 10:17 PM. Mayor Protema Legaspi has finished with his comment. Councilmember Thailanda, would you like to comment anything?
I do think that, it's a very controversial item, obviously. When we get the agendas, the proposals come out on the agenda, I do think that the hundred dollars is a bit, not a little bit. It's actually, I think it should be reduced maybe to 25. One thing is to feed the homeless. Another thing is to help them stop being homeless. And the chief, so currently our ordinance allows them to remove, so there is an ordinance already in place and it allows them to remove any individual housed or unhoused that's on public property. And this ordinance is adding private property or camping on private property. But I think that the police department has been, and it's demonstrated that it is compassionate in terms of handling the unhoused community. I think we've all seen it and we've all dealt with them. And for me, that's the expectation for it to be a compassionate process. This, this allows, you know, a little bit leeway but up to, you know, code enforcement or the police department to have discretion and how they to have discretion and how they deal with individuals found in these situations it is it is a hard subject I don't like I said I don't agree with the fine I'd like to see that reduced because of so so many things it would become I see it would become a vicious cycle setting it that high yes we are aiming to improve the quality of life all around not just for the unhoused individuals but you know the businesses the kids walking to school anyone who's found in that situation and it is a crisis it's not just removing them it's also offering them services so like I said one thing is to feed the homeless another thing is to actually help them stop being homeless and it it's a vicious cycle and it can happen to anyone any one of us can experience that we've been I know I've been fortunate enough not to have to go through that and I don't know if I'll ever be in that situation there's people who go to war and then they come back and they're veterans and because of whatever you know health issues mental health issues they have they become homeless and then they have to get out of that so this for me it's it is something I see a benefit to but I also think that there has to be you know adjustments and like I said I think that the police department and the code enforcement have been compassionate and we see we I can name a couple of individuals who I I have spoke to homeless people and I I think that they go through issues that we can't see because their mental health mental health is so complex and so delicate and it does require a lot of compassion and patience and there's individuals who are right now currently probably in a parking stall in front of Fias Paredes who have been there for years and I I don't know if he he wants help they don't move him and I sometimes see that gentleman and I go I hope he doesn't get hit by a car at night while he's sleeping in the stalls the parking stalls is what I'm referring to and he does he he stays there but he's a human being and if that's where he feels safe and that's where he feels good I think that's what the police officers see when they're going through their routines because they have the ability to remove them and they have it so this ordinance just allows those types of situations the police department or code enforcement to have a discretion on how they handle it so I like I said I don't agree with the hundred dollars and then going up to five hundred dollars I think that's extreme I think it should be lowered at least to twenty-five and then maybe instead of the five hundred fifty if we're gonna do a second but I think that if you set it so high you put him in a vicious cycle instead of trying to get someone into you know it's not yeah that's that's extreme so that's all I have to say
Council member Marquez
My understanding is that the individuals would first get a warning correct and with this warning after receiving the warning they're also going to be getting a packet of information to receive behavioral health services woman haven't information social services and continuum of care correct
Yes that's all correct
And while speaking towards in regards to this matter I feel that this is a healthcare situation more than anything I don't think as the city were in the business of you know housing people unfortunately I wish we had that kind of funding but we don't not and I do hear you guys I don't want you to feel that I don't and I know that I have specifically spoken to some of you in regards to that so I did hear you but at the same time we have to listen to everyone and not just a few when we're up here thank you
Council member Calderon
I have no comment
Okay do we have a motion to approve
I'll make the motion to approve
Do I have a second second by council member Marquez
Mayor Diana Noricumbo
Yes
Mayor Potem Victor Legaspi
Yes
Council member Lisa Thailand
Yes
Council member Adriana Marquez
Yes
Council member Lorenzo Calderon
Yes
Motion passes
Thank you item number ten Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Callexico authorizing the surplus of a modular trailer Do we have any public comment
Yes we do Beatriz Rosset
Beatriz Rosset Okay Who is it
He can now it's private it's been well not yet maybe forty-five days but yeah he can
Sergeant Pajer could you close the door so we can continue please thank you okay do we have public comment on item number ten
Ah nada mas la pregunta es una pregunta el sobre van a tomar que ya estará quizás la resolución hecha verdad pero eso de ese ese trailer donde está y es acerca de venderla y qué va a pasar con el dinero o de qué se trata este número diez alguien que me pueda explicar
The trailer is gonna go to the surplus auction and cuando se venda ese dinero se puede invertir para atrás en la ciudad
Oh bueno pero no nada específico solamente en ponerlo en el dinero muy bien era toda mi pregunta este era esta ah pero no no la última cosa ese trailer de quién era o o dónde estaba o de qué servía
Ese trailer se compró cuando tumbaron el edificio de la estación de bomberos uno la vieja para hacer uno nuevo pues los bomberos se movieron a donde era la corte y la corte no tenía baños regaderas para bañarse eso es el trailer se compró se puso atrás del edificio de la donde era la la corte y se usó por cuatro tres años mientras que construían la departamento nuevo
Ustedes ya no le pueden dar ningún uso ya no sirve para nada de adaptarlo
Se vía una fuga de agua se dañó el piso y también se dañó el alambre del de los
Acondicionados
Ajá y ahorita no está funcionando ya tiene años que no que no está en servicio
Muchas gracias por la información era todo gracias
Okay no more comment okay council would like to address item number ten no okay do I have a motion to approve second okay
Mayor Diana Noricumbo
Yes
Mayor Potem Victor Legaspi
Yes
Council member Lisa Thailand
Yes
Council member Adriana Marquez
Yes
Council member Lorenzo Calderon
Yes
Motion passes
Okay item number twelve approve resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding between the Callexico border pause rescue and the city of Callexico do we have public comment Oh we have a presentation okay
And I do have a policy Hi everybody my name is Diana Daniels I have been coming to city council for a very long time stopped showing up after kind of feeling beat up and defeated and then I came back again and then left again I come back again and here I am again so I just kind of want to introduce myself so I am the CEO of Callexico Border Pause this is something that has been in the works for probably fourteen years I came across the animal control facility approximately fourteen years ago and I saw that it was in a very rough shape I wanted to help I wanted to do something I didn't even know we even had you know a shelter so after after so many years of volunteering on my Saturdays after after donating money after donating resources after all these things I haven't left I've been going there every single Saturday for the last fourteen years so I've been through all different city council members and I would like to first thank you and I'm glad that I see new blood so hopefully this is a different type of mentality and I'm excited to talk to you guys so I would like to first and foremost also thank Chief Orozco I think he's one of the only chiefs that is always available to provide service and to hear me out when I have something that I'm passionate about which are which are these Callexico forgotten lives that are at the pound so so chief thank you so much for always I know I bug you all the time but he does call me back he does email me back he does talk to me he does give me the reassurance and the attention that you know I need so thank you also I want to thank Sergeant Acuna he's been the best every time you know I need something or if a question he's like you know I'll find out for you I don't know the answer but I'll get it for you and he does he'll call me back he'll text me back he'll give me what I need so I'm very thankful for you know these two gentlemen who have done and now staying in job so and lastly I do want to thank Mr Juan Contreras and also Victor Legaspi for a meeting last week we had a meeting just kind of asking or talking about this MOU so so the bottom line is this is what we're working with this is the Callexico pound for those of you who don't know where this is at this is just a little bit north of the outlets there's a paved little road that you can take before you get to to the dump in that area and you'll see this it's looked like this for as long as I can remember I'm not gonna lie it's looked this way for a very long time you can see broken beds unwashed towels blankets broken and rusted kennels so and I just want to point out something also Mr Lorenzo Calderon you had mentioned that you went down there and you looked at it thank you for doing that I appreciate it because for so many years I've asked city council members to please go down there and not even have to ask you so thank you for doing that I really appreciate you actually went you looked at it and you even said yeah it needs some care right so next please I'm sorry
Desperate
Absolutely and I'm so glad you said that next I just can see more broken kennels small dog beds clutter broken appliances rusting unwashed bowls by the way everything I know doesn't look beautiful but everything there at one point was looking better and the supplies that you see that are the broken dog beds that are broken this broken appliances rusting everything was stuff that I donated myself personally and the residents of Callexico also helped me get through donations through funding through helping me with a washer and dryer I had somebody on Facebook say hey you want a washer and dryer I got one can you pick it up yeah I'm right there so it's nice that the community now is starting to notice and so many people have told me I don't know we even had an animal control facility well now you do you know I'm I'm really proud to say that we have over eight thousand members on Facebook I'm really proud to say that I have reconnected so many lost animals with their people I know a lot of people came out here today to represent the the public and the homeless and the people and the community well you know to some people animals are also children right for those of us who don't have children those are our kids you know some may agree and some may not agree and that's your prerogative but it's there okay next please also again as you can see the conditions are not getting any better at all broken and rusted kennels no walls to keep in the heat during winter month and nights okay I want to touch a little bit about this because ever since I can remember there was no roof at the pound zero nothing one year I said I'm gonna do something to make it happen so we had the very first and I'm gonna take credit for this because I deserve it we had the very first five K doggy run after we did that other places in the valley adopted that concept which you know I guess it's flattering so I'll take that right so we raised money and we got a roof now we have a roof we were able to get with the old chief who got some of the animal control workers to actually put it up now we have a roof I know people are like a roof right listen for us it's a lot okay it's hot in here and it's cold in the winter so for us a roof is something else then okay we have a roof and now we're doing walls right or something that's gonna keep the heat in in the winter and then it's gonna be colder in the summer right I mean we have to have something there going so for years I've asked the city I came here I pleaded I've cried I've laughed I smiled that was nice I was mean all these things none of them worked you know why because it's about money right so finally you know I said okay I'm gonna start a non-for-profit organization so Callexico Border Pause is a non-for-profit organization okay we are a rescue we are not gonna be a dumping place for people to bring their pets we are there for information we're there to network we're there to help okay and me and the chief we even talked about this last time that we're even trying to think of different programs that we can incorporate to help people keep their animals and not turn them into animal control we're trying okay this is something that's been going on for fourteen years unfortunately I'm the only one that's been coming here and talking about this so here I am again talking about it and because we have new blood hopefully you guys hear me out and you know we'll be on our merry way so next please so what we have done so we now have an Amazon store where we publicize pretty pretty regularly and we tell the public what we need so people say you know what I can't adopt a dog or a cat and I can't I can't foster but you know what I could do I could give you a couple beds great so then they send this so then we put these dog beds in the pound so the dogs don't have to sleep on concrete ground okay people send us blankets people send us dog food things that we can help because I realize that it's about money and I know that animal control is the last of everyone's priority but it's on top of my priority but that's me I'm I'm one of those people that you think you know they're out there and that's fine I don't care but this is something for me it matters okay just like it matters for those people and their own cause this matters to me so I'm here just explaining to you about it go ahead so what happened so because I'm one of those people that I will talk to anybody and everybody I spoke to one of the people that I knew and I said hey you know anybody who can go ahead and give us temporary housing or temporary walls and this person says yeah actually my family has a business so with the help of the chief he said you know what let's go ahead and get these guys over there so these guys were able to come in and put these tarps to keep some kind of heat inside the facility it's not permanent but it's something but for so many years it was just open so now we at least have that so I'm very thankful for that but this is not a permanent thing As you can see it's looking a lot better imagine just the roof and kennels and nothing else in the summertime it was hot in the wintertime it was cold this right here for some of you may look kind of kind of not great but this is pretty great to me considering where we came from so please have an open mind I know it's not the best right so what we want for the future okay we wanna if we can we want a washer and dryer that's actually gonna keep the blankets and towels clean because ours are busted why is it busted because when it was when it was windy a bunch of equipment fell on the washer and dryer and it's not able to wash anymore so so hygienic practices from washing food bowls and water bowls to eliminate bacteria growth I'm very big on that I always ask animal control please bleach everything because a lot of dogs who are homeless come to us with parvo or distampa or something else we need to bleach everything do not put a dog in that kennel until it's been properly bleached stable walls to hold in heat and air condition one day we're gonna have walls when I don't know but I'm working towards that right installation of HVAC units so something happened a couple of years ago where we raised money with the with the helps of these rescue we raised money and we're able to get heaters now we have heaters inside the facility that actually keep the animals warm it's not super warm but it's warmer so that's a big thing repairs the kennels including latches metals wall repairs and rust removal lighting within the facility now that walls have been put up and lighting is limited so a lot of the kennels are busted a lot of dogs have have chewed their way in and out of them right we have the material to do it we have the material it's not beautiful but it's material okay so what we need from you from the city we need cooperation we need volunteers to clean up the pound help with fostering help with networking help with low income to keep their pets by helping with food spay and neuter advocates and awareness that's something that me and the chief just talked about last week we're trying to brainstorm and get some kind of organization that can possibly come down here maybe once a month or something and we can get a campaign the Humane Society does an amazing job of scheduling those types of services people are just not aware of that so when people log into our Facebook account or into our Instagram So, when people log into our Facebook account or into our Instagram, I constantly network, I constantly put stuff out, hey, if you want to spay and neuter your pet, call here, do this, do this, do that. I even go as far as, hey, if you can take your pet there, I will take them for you, because I am committed to making this happen. So, why am I here today? I'm here today because we have a lot of volunteers, um, retired people who are just like, you know what, I got tools, I got time. Let's do it. Great, I just need the city to back me up on it and give me half the time, that's it. So, I want to thank Blanca Morales, who's also on my board, and, um, we have an MOU in place, we just want you guys to, to look it over, to let me know that everything's beautiful and perfect and you agree with everything on there, and I'm gonna go home, that's it. So, of course, I'm just joking around about that, but this is something that I'm very passionate about. This has been going on for fourteen years, um, so I'm hoping that with your assistance and your cooperation, we're able to move forward and make the facility better. I'm not asking for any money, yet. I'm just asking for an understanding, cooperation, and we do have people who want to help out. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Beatriz Rosset.
Bueno. Aquí estoy otra vez. Lástima que ya no hay tantas personas que escucharon la petición de la señorita. Ya sé que la ciudad está en problemas con el dinero, pero yo quisiera que por lo menos a la mejor pudieran ayudar con... Si, si ella quisiera hacer un evento como vendiendo algo, le, le ayudaran con no cobrarle por el permiso, por ejemplo, darle esa facilidad de que no pague por estar en ese espacio, podría hacer algo. No sé de qué otra manera podría ser, pero, um, también si le ayudaran a promover eso ahí en los, eh, los pizarrones. Eh, no sé qué manera, la más fácil para mí es que cuando quiera hacer un evento, a la mejor sí le perdonan sus cuotas, porque no sé si van a poder tener un apoyo económico para darle o, o de qué manera. Todo eso es casi siempre el trabajo que tenemos que hacer por afuera y muy rara ves la ciudad, las ciudades apoyan con este tipo de cosas, pues es difícil ya sé eso. Eh, tenemos en Mexicali, el municipio que aparentemente apoya un poco con rescate que hizo, que también no está dando resultado porque no está siendo tan bien como debe, pero, pues, yo les quisiera pedir aunque sea esa parte de que le perdonen sus, sus fis, verdad? Eh, yo ya por acá a la mejor se junta, nos juntamos, hacemos algo para promover una venta de lo que sea, es la manera como se agarra dinero para los animalitos. Solamente alguien que ha tenido el contacto con un animalito sabe que se convierte en una parte de nuestra familia y que nos da mucha felicidad y que son incondicionales. Este, necesitas tener con él ese contacto para entender esa parte que muchas personas no, todavía no han conocido, es como cuando alguien, pues no quisiera decir eso, pero nunca ha tenido un hijo y no sabe todavía lo que se siente cuando ya lo tienes tu bebé contigo, es otra, otro mundo. Así también es cuando tú no conoces el animalito y tu interacción con él, no sabes de lo que tú te estás perdiendo. Es, es algo que solamente cuando la experiencia la tienes con él, eh, es cuando entiendes. Y por favor, ojalá que puedan hacer algo por este rescate. Es todo lo que quiero decir esta noche y muchas gracias por su atención.
Gracias señora.
Okay, thank you.
No more comments.
No more?
Okay. Madam Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the, the council members here, because we've been asking for this MOU for the past three years, this is the first time with the assistance of Mr. Contreras to be on the agenda. All we're asking, todo lo que estamos pidiendo aquí es que nos dieran permiso para tener los voluntarios, no estamos pidiendo dinero, queremos los voluntarios que ellos nos dejen con la seguridad, que estén ayudando ahí a los animalitos. Uh, so, nomás quería aclarar eso y es lo que dice aquí el papel para que nos dejen estar ahí con voluntarios. So, um, that being said, now we're taking, they're taking care of the parks of volunteers. Now we can take care of the animal control department with volunteers and with our contacts, Diane's network, that people that are willing to come in and bring material, chief material, and that we're hitting more departments with you having to spend less money. I know the animal control has a budget as well, and I believe you guys got some new trucks, right? The, the pound trucks. And then I also want to thank, um, Chief Orozco, his staff at the, at the doggy, uh, pound, because we are also able to rehouse a lot of the dogs, so they don't get euthanized, right Diane? We've been saving a lot of dogs and we work with nonprofits that are, um, rescue places in San Diego. There's a big one in Ramona, which is really nice. And, uh, so they get these dogs already to get adopted. So, our model here is let's adopt, not chop, and let's get these animals neutered, including the cats, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, bring it back to council, does, uh, council have any comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. Mrs. Daniels is one of the persons that, I've never seen anybody that loves animals as much as Ms. Daniels. I don't know how your husband does that, but she, she loves her animals. And I do have the utmost confidence that, uh, that whoever is volunteering, that she's gonna be really picky about it. So, that person needs to care for the animals. And, uh, I do understand that our animal control officers are, are extremely busy. And I think that you ladies being there is gonna assist and, um, and also along with the volunteers, and I thank you for that.
Okay, any further comment?
I just want to thank Blanca and Ms. Daniels for rescuing the dogs. I know that I follow you guys on, um, social media and I do see all the doggies you take there up on a weekly basis, so that we can save them. Thank you for that.
Any further comment?
I remember you, Ms. Daniels. Oh yes. I had the pleasure of seeing you bring your passion multiple times to this council over the years, so. Um, I am happy to see this item on the agenda, thank both of you for pushing it. Um, thank you to staff and to the city manager for getting it on here. Um, I think it's important to empower, um, our local volunteers, local leaders, the community members, and this is one, one giant step, actually, for the fur babies. Um, they, they are a handful for, for anyone, yeah, I know. Uh, it makes me smile, because it's something that I see finally coming to fruition for you and it's, it's fun to, to think about it, because who doesn't, well, animals are awesome, yeah, yeah, I know, it needs a lot of attention, um, a lot, so. Uh, thank you guys for pushing this and volunteering to make it better, so.
And just to mention, this is a clear, um, a perfect example of what it is to have solutions instead of creating problems when the community comes together, thank you.
Okay, council member Calderón?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, um, so, item number twelve, approve resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding between the Collexico Border Paws rescue and the city of Collexico, do I have motion to approve? Second?
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylinda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, accept and/or amend the agenda policy, do we have public comment?
No, we don't.
Do you have comment from council?
Yes.
Okay.
I propose that we maintain the agenda as it is, with the understanding that we'll adhere the established deadline policies. We need to follow those policies. Additionally, I suggest that council members request an agenda item. It should be added, not to the next council meeting, because it makes it tough for running, but the following council meeting, unless it's an emergency. That's the, uh, comment that I have.
Yeah, so, um, as it states here, I requested this item, um, mainly for informational purposes, because, um, and not only for the council, but, um, really for the public and in the essence of transparency, because sometimes we are up here and we request items and, you know, it's next, next, uh, next council meeting. And then the perception from the public is that it will be on the next council meeting, but then it's a very hectic or chaotic dance to actually get it on the next council meeting, because the deadlines will happen to be the very next day after the council meeting. And so, um, I, I think that, that's why I requested it, so we could put it into perspective, discuss it, but also get feedback from not only the council, but the staff. I, I think it's important to know, um, what, what staff's dealing with when we request items, because it's easy to say it up here and say, oh, you know, I want this, I want to see this, and, and sometimes we don't understand the entire process that it takes to get it on the agenda. Um, so, I, I don't know if you have any comments, um, that you'd like to share? If you got any feedback from staff on what, what's best, from the city clerk, from everyone?
I think they're fine with it.
I really want to hear what, what they need.
They, they do need that extra, because they're already doing so much, right? And if it like, uh, council, um, Protem Legaspi mentioned, if it's pressing an item that needs to come back, it will come back. Staff has that understanding, if it's something that can go to April fifth or so on, we can, uh, get direction from council to say, hey, bring this, not for this date, but for this one, that gives them two weeks to work, uh, on the staff report and make sure everything's lined up, because it's not only having everything due the next day for tomorrow, you know, because staff report goes from Mr. Coin, Mr. Coin. If there's a fiscal impact, that goes to Ms. Chaparro, Ms. Chaparro now has to look and make sure everything's clear to go and all the numbers and funding is matching up, goes back to Mr. Coin, then goes back to administration, and the administration goes back to city clerk. So there is a whole process that kind of takes in, it's not just submitting one staff report to the city clerk. It needs to go to different departments depending on what the discussion or topic is to get approval and funding, make sure everything's lined up. So, that additional, extra two weeks can easily take care of that.
I do, I do want to add, uh, if for some reason, you know, we're, we're, we're discussing this and, um, we request an item and now we're gonna be under the impression that it won't be next council, but the following council. Um, if there happens to be a delay, you know, I just ask that, um, city manager informs us, um, either, you know, prior or during, uh, maybe the, the comment section or next agenda items, because, um, when we have members of the public here, they, they listen and they go, okay, next agenda, and, or they come back and they go, well, why isn't this on the agenda, so.
And, and one of the great, great, um, you know, because, uh, it's like Ms. Marquez mentioned, don't bring me problems, bring me solutions. And Mr. Coin, with his department, he's already kind of outlined the next, the, the next April, May, June items on his department to say, hey, this date, I'm gonna bring back this resolution, I'm gonna bring back this resolution. So maybe the council can adopt or look into, say, you know, for April, bring me this, this and this, and kind of make a calendar of events, so the public already kind of is aware of what items are gonna come up in the near future. And that's one of the ideas that he had brought to me, he kind of broke it down for his department on, on what he's doing with the housing element, with CDVG, HTV, and that's kind of working for Mr. Coin. That way, you know, he's able to focus on one task at a time and gives himself enough time to prepare all those other tasks that are coming in the near future.
Okay, do you have further comment?
I just want to make sure that if we do adopt this resolution or this item here, we make sure that everyone, including ourselves, are held accountable to it. No more submitting items the day of or late reports on request of city council, because I think that's, uh, some, sometimes that, um, carries a lot of weight and I don't think it is fair to, um, the employees. I understand we can bring emergency items and those obviously can be submitted, but not something, oh, because so-and-so requested it, now we need to do it. So, if that's the understanding and we're all in agreement, that's what we're gonna follow, then I'm all for it.
Councilmember Calderón?
There is a calendar of all our council meeting. So, Ms. Marquez said it, and I think everyone said it, there is a process, people just need to be accountable. And if you can't get your item on the next board meeting, it's because they couldn't get it. But there is this calendar and you can actually, if you want it that bad, then you can actually choose one of these dates and say, have it by this date. Because a lot of these items require a lot of research, a lot of backup and so forth, so, uh, at least give our staff, their understaff, an opportunity to not only get their regular work done, but also follow up on the items that we want to hear. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So, item number thirteen, accept and/or amend agenda policy, do I have motion?
A, a motion to approve.
Second?
You're motioning to what? To leave it at as is?
No, where the changes.
The changes to?
To what we all said.
Yeah, the, to amend the agenda policy to what, what, what you just said pretty much.
I thought the process was okay, it was just people not, not, uh, not doing what they're supposed to.
I'm in the understanding that we're changing it to acknowledge that when we ask for something, it's at the, not the next one, but the
Yeah, it's the following one, yeah. Correct?
Correct, or according to your, um, uh, sheet there, you can just choose a date, for instance, it doesn't have to be for the following or the next one, you could just say, hey, you know, I want it on the April twentieth meeting.
But that was the motion.
The motion, that's how it currently is, correct?
We just need to follow the rules.
Basically, yes.
So, the motion.
The, the, the policy.
Why are we changing the rules if the rules are already there?
The policy itself, I mean, it should work if everybody follows the rules. I've been the city clerk for a year and a half and it has not been followed. I'm always scrambling at the last minute, you know, when you scramble at the last minute, you make mistakes. Um, I believe the previous city clerk would stay till midnight working on the agenda, so I mean, it just needs to be followed by everybody.
Okay. So the motion is that the agenda that was set on September second, two thousand eight, continue, but it strictly be followed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, no?
Do you have a motion?
So then I think we need to
There's change right now.
The motion needs to be read then. Or vote on it and then tell no.
So we can retract that motion, right? Without voting?
If you're both in accordance.
Yes.
How long do you both?
I'll go ahead and retract my motion.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the agenda that's already set, September second, two thousand eight, to be the current agenda and that it be strictly followed, correct? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Tylinda, roll call.
I'm a little confused.
It's more of an notation, so it's not, it's just more of an notation to the policy than.
Okay, as is, okay.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylinda?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderón?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number fourteen, authorize acting city manager to sign agreement of professional services between the city of Collexico and Nicholas Engineering Inc. in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred, two dollars and six cents for construction management, geotechnical and inspection services for sidewalk improvement. Uh, Grant Street, Collexico Street and Van De Graaff Avenue, federal project number CML dash five one six eight zero thirty-six. Do we have public comment?
No.
Okay, the council, does council have any comment?
No.
Okay. Do I have motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by councilmember Calderón, second?
A second.
Second by Mayor Protem Legaspi, roll call.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tylinda?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Diana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number fifteen, sidewalk improvement, Grant Street, Colexco Street, and Van de Graff Avenue, federal project number CML five-one-six-eight-zero-thirty-six. A, award bid proposal for Rover Engineering, Inc. in the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. And B, authorize acting city manager to sign a construction agreement between the city of Colexco and Rover Engineering, Inc. in the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars for sidewalk improvement, Grant Street, Colexco Street, and Van de Graff Avenue, federal project number CML five-one-six-eight-zero-thirty-six. And C, authorize acting city manager to approve any future change orders not to exceed sixty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and ninety cents, ten percent of Rover Engineering, Inc. base bid plus alternate bid as per city ordinance number one-two-one-eight. Do you have public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, does council have any comment?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve item number fifteen is red?
A motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by, uh, councilmember Marquez, second by Mayor Protem Legaspi, roll call please.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailand?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number sixteen, approval of bid documents for Enrique Camarena Memorial Library, Community Center, and Police Department Parking Lot Rehabilitation Project number twenty-two-five-dash-three-hundred, and authorize the Public Works Department to send the project out to bid. Do we have a public comment?
No, we don't.
Comment from council? Motion to approve item number sixteen?
A motion.
A, a motion? Motion by councilmember Thailand, second by councilmember Calderon, roll call please.
Mayor Diana Noricumbo?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Potem Victor Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Thailand?
Yes.
Councilmember Diana Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, informational items. Uh, number seventeen, informational item, fund number two-three-three, local transportation authority, Measure D Capital Improvement Program, fiscal year twenty-two-four-twenty-five.
This item is just informational item to give the council the list of projects that we have for fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five when it comes to measure D funds. Um, I know there were some issues of, of, you know, do we have, have available funding? Um, as of right now, we have, um, fourteen million dollars that we have to use and all these projects that we have on our list is already allocated to. Um, as previously mentioned, um, there has been some discussions of trying to get more funding for the, uh, Second Street All-American Canal Bridge. Um, and then right now, um, I, I did a task order, um, to get an engineer on board, um, which I will hopefully be presenting in the next city council meeting to do a much-needed street overlay of approximately twenty-four streets that we have on our list that need to be resurfaced. So it's just an informational item on our, uh, measure D funds.
Okay, we don't have, we don't have a public comment, right? Okay, so, uh, future?
Jose Hinojosa.
For what item?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Hi, Jose Hinojosa, ten fifty-six F Torres. Um, in reference to this item, I would like to, um, just, uh, note that on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, we were presented with a, um, Martin Luther King to, uh, Baker Road Improvement. Um, it's, it was item, item six on July twenty-fifth. And then on December fourth, we were presented with a change order for almost, um, six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars to, to do work on, on Cole Road. And, um, Ms. Thailand and Mr. Legaspi voted on this item to table this item unanimously, uh, was voted to table this item. But then all of a sudden, this past week, they started work on Cole Road and we never authorized this change order. So, uh, it was never presented to this council. The, uh, it was agreed that this item was going to be rebid because the change order was, uh, more than ten percent. So, uh, is the work going to get done? Or the work that, um, Mrs. Falome presented, and it's nothing against, you know, personal, uh, is that work, uh, going to get done? For a fact, we know that, uh, many heavy trucks, semi-trailers utilize this road every day. You know, we live on, in the Hartston community, we see this every day. So what's going to happen or what happened to these? I, why were we presented with a change order and then it was not brought back to council? And this is regarding measure D funds. We're, we're, uh, we're using, if, if it was approved, we're using one-point-six-million dollars of measure D funds. But this was not approved. So is, is, is that road going to get fixed? What, what's going to happen? Or, or is it just, just a overlay and then it's going to get damaged in two years, one year? So I think we need to look in, into item six from July twenty-fifth and item, um, ten from December fourth. And if that could be brought back so, so Public Works can prepare, you know, a response or, I don't know. So, um, yes, Cole Road needs repaving, strongly recommend the following, a paving management program. Who chooses, uh, these roads? Who chooses, uh, the sidewalks? So other cities, like I, I, I wrote down here, uh, City of Lemongrave, population thirty thousand, a hundred miles west of Colexco, has adopted this program with great success. It combines need analysis, budget, maintenance, and has collaboration from the community. So it, it's, it's, it's a joint effort between the community, Public Works, your council. And that, in that way, we, we find out, you know, we agree on what, on, on what these major projects, major millions of dollars are going to be, going to be spent. So I don't know if, if, if we can get a response or we, or for the next council meeting, we can talk about this, Cole Road specifically. And if we can get, uh, at some point, uh, a payment management program that we can all work together and, and, uh, address, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinojosa. Do we have further public comment? Okay, um, so moving on to future agenda items. Mayor Protem Legaspi?
I don't have none right now.
Councilmember Thailand?
Okay, it's the future agenda. Oh, okay, um, yeah, so, sorry. So on future agenda item, uh, it's more of a request, um, not, well, it is an item, but a request to add a new line item. Um, I think, uh, well, it's two. So, um, I'd like to see department memos, um, once a month to know what the departments are doing. Because we get a lot of, um, we give a lot of direction up here and then sometimes it makes it back, sometimes it doesn't. And, um, I think it's important to know the projects that the departments are working on. So I'd like to see a department memo at least once a month, um, to see how projects are moving and status updates. Um, and also other jurisdictions have, uh, on their agenda, a line item. Like we have, um, council comments, city manager comments. Maybe, uh, if we could add department head comments. And if department heads have anything they want to share about their department or they'd like to highlight, I think it would be great to include them. Um, we do have them sitting here, but I think that, you know, if they have events, because we have the library having events all the time, we have the community services department having events all the time. Um, chief and his department are, um, fighting crime all the time. So I want to hear that and I'm sure the, the public wants to hear what's going on in the department. So I think that would be, um, really beneficial to add to our agenda so they can have a moment to highlight the good things that, even, even the bad things, whatever they want to highlight of their department, so, so I'd like to see that, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Marquez.
I would like to make sure that we're providing the information that we need for our citizens in Spanish when it is, um, that we're supposed to. Um, I know that before it was being done, but I guess we forgot or maybe we didn't know about it. Um, so make sure that we're able to do that. Um, also, I would like if we can go and look into the payroll errors that were mentioned, um, about, um, you know, certain departments, uh, not getting paid correctly. That's, that's a big issue. And then finally, um, I know that one of the community members did ask in regards to the snack bar, um, in one of the, uh.
Baseball parks?
So if we can, I don't know, give them guidance in regards to that or if we have any information of what it is that they need to do in order to maintain one? Because there should be some sort of health code that we need to follow in regards to the, um, snack bars or at, at those locations, so if we could just follow up with those, thank you.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yeah, um, future agenda items. The first one I have is a presentation on the status of the Heber Par, uh, Park Project. And I'd like to see it by April third. And the reason I, I'm want a presentation is that we have seven-point-seven million dollars of this project and we're running out of time. If we don't get on this project, we're going to lose seven million point seven, seven-point-seven million. So, uh, we need to know where we're at and what we need to do to get this project on its way. The second one is a presentation on the future compliance needs of the water and wastewater facilities. I toured the facilities and I said, like I said in during the meeting, they're falling apart. Uh, God forbid, if we get an earthquake, we're going to have some issues. And I know, and I learned today, because I sat down with one of our consultants, we have forty million, forty million dollars waiting to be invested in these areas. So we're paying revenue, I mean, what was it? Um, where was it? We're paying, uh, it's a bond, correct? Forty, the forty million. So we're paying on it and we need to fix our facilities here. And we have to do it right away because they're in dire need of repairs. So, uh, we need to somehow bring up a plan, see, we need to decide where we're going to go from there. And the third one is the status on cannabis business license and the revenue contribution to our city. Um, we need to find out where we're at with that because they promised millions of dollars and I haven't seen any money yet, so if we can, um, I'll give you until May eighth on that one, whoever's going to take care of it. And last but not least, and this is for my son, can we put out a schedule for a sweeper? Because the sweeper just passes by and we want to move cars when, so we can get our streets cleaned. So please, if we could put it on our website or whatever, uh, make sure that, uh, our public knows so they can move their vehicles or whatever they have in front of their house so we can clean our streets. And that's all I have. Yes, Ms.?
Sure, we put that schedule right down, move, move your cars.
Yes. I appreciate it, Ms. Coyne.
Yes.
So also I wanted to have somebody look into the ordinance in regards to the trash cans. A lot of trash cans are being left on the streets and if this is going to be happening, um, we need to make sure that we, our citizens know that these trash cans can only be sitting on the curb for the twenty-four hours the day of. And I don't know if there's anybody that can go around reminding them in a nice way to put those away.
I, I think the city of Imperial adopted something similar to that that we can maybe piggyback off on and, and see what they did there because they'll go and find you if you leave them for an extended period of time on this, on the, on the street.
Yeah, that, that would be excellent.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, before I give my future agenda items, I want to, um, give thanks again to, um, acting city manager Juan Contreras. Um, after tomorrow, we're going to have Mr. Daniels, who's sitting here with us, show up at five AM.
Just might as well just stay.
Just stay here.
Don't go home, just stay.
So, um, but I know they're going to be working in collaboration still. But, um, so, yeah, I want to, I want to say thank you on behalf of all of us and your department and your city. And I want to welcome also Mr. Daniels and we're going to be working really hard. Um, also, so with that said, um, I would like to see, um, one of the things that, that you let Mr. Daniels know is that MOU with the agency that we met with that, that was going to assist us with the Heber Park. Um, so this agency, um, they were going to work with us to, to assist us with that and also with looking for funding for the water and sewer. So two of the items that councilmember Calderon requested, um, have to do with the MOU with that agency. So if we can get that moving, um, I really want to see that by next, the next council meeting, although we have the deadlines already. I would kind of consider it an emergency only because we're short-staffed and we need the help. I, I want the commission started. So if, if, uh, we'll figure out a way, if it can't be that day, um, um, maybe even a special meeting. But what, I know you said we had two commissions that we had enough applications to fill and then the rest we had little applications, correct?
Correct, yes.
So then, um, if we can send, start sending those applications out, maybe scan them, send them to council members so we can do the interview so that, and then we'll go from there and see if, if it's not, not too quick. I know we just adopted that, but for me, it is important because we really need to get them working, um, so they can help us. Um, but if not, you know, maybe we could even do a short, quick, special meeting just to get them, um, appointed. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, we also have a MOU that we adopted with San Diego State. Um, so I would like to start seeing that put to work to where, um, our departments or we can, you know, talk to the dean, or I think you had another contact one, to start seeing if we can get, um, those students giving us a hand, that would be great. Um, parking meters, that's a big one. We really need to get that on board. So I believe we already have the town hall, right? That it's going to be at the twelfth of, that the first one, we're doing two? We're, we're going to do that one. So that one, if, if the parking meters isn't on the agenda for next week, you have until five PM tomorrow? Is that correct? You have until five PM tomorrow. We really need to see the parking meters on the agenda. And then we would also like to see an update, um, now that Mr. Daniels will come on board, um, on the paramedic situation, if we were able to, if we already have the agreement in place and, and what the safeguards are. And that's all I have. So let me find. All right, so, um, with, with no other items left on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion adjourned at eleven nineteen PM.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras, for everything, putting up with us.